Need to have an expansive view of what could be. As you leave everything behind, you just walk away from the chain of addiction, because all you're doing is restricting yourself. And when you stop restricting yourself, you can go anywhere. Hope is here.
After a basketball game, a black teenage boy, Brandon, reads his texts in his family group chat. Auntie Flo, congrats on the big win. Mom, that's my baby. Brandon replies, thanks y'all. In a park, his sister Maya texts, where are we celebrating? Dad replies, home. Mom texts, I got dinner going. Auntie Flo replies, ooh, I can't wait. Then receives a FEMA flood watch text alert. She texts the family, anyone see that weather alert? We need a plan to stay safe, especially after last year. Ready has a list of resources at ready.gov/plan. In his workshop, Dad sends a photo of emergency supplies and texts, looks like we need flashlights and batteries. Leaving a store with a shopping bag, Brandon replies, I got us covered. Mom texts, I'll check in with Grandma and Papa. Maya texts, thanks Auntie, feeling good about this plan. In her parked car, Auntie Flo replies, love y'all, we gotta stay safe. Later, the family sorts emergency supplies at home. Stay connected, plan for natural disasters today. Visit ready.gov/plan.
You guys all set?
We'll be ready in 30 seconds.
30 seconds, sure.
It's a long stretch this time. Okay, we're ready to go.
All set?
Yep.
Okay, stand by. Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting of September 5th, 2023. This is Select Board Chair Tom Lucchese, and I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Josh Levine?
Here.
Vinit Hemavathie?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
Dan Swirko?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar is posted on the agenda on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or QA function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comments. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comment section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raised hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to a panelist, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand and *6 to mute/unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and their addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and some attendees are participating in a video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. Okay, we'll now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. All stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we'll start with announcements. The 2023 Fall Special Town Meeting Article Submission Deadline is set, well, the meeting is set for Tuesday, November 7th, in the Long Meadow High School Gymnasium. The petition articles are due to the Select Board's office no longer than 12 noon on September 22nd, 2023. In order for a petition to be guaranteed placement on the Special Town Meeting warrant, 100 names, signatures, and addresses of registered town voters are required and must be certified by the town clerk. For additional information about town meetings and forms and instructions to be used for petition articles, please visit www-longmeadowma.gov/townmeeting. The Long Meadow Street construction, Armond Construction is making an emergency repair to the stormwater drain on Long Meadow Street between Bark Hall and Hillside Terrace. Work is expected to be completed by the end of the week, 9/8/23, and proceed this area with caution. You'll see they have cones set up for two lanes. Upcoming events, the Long Meadow Days Festival will be held on Saturday, September 9th, and Sunday, September 10th, from 10:00 to 5:00 p.m. on the Long Meadow Green. The Long Meadow Pride Festival will also be held on September 17th, from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m., also on the town green. Okay, next is for resident comments. Is there anyone in attendance who wish to make comments, or anyone on Zoom?
Just a reminder, if you're on the Zoom, press the raise hand icon, and we'll let you in if you wish to make resident comment. I do not see anyone on the Zoom.
Okay.
And Mr. Lucchese, just to make one point about the first note that you read in the announcements, the petition articles need to be at the Select Board's office by September 22nd, including the town clerk certifying all of those articles. So we've had some questions about that. They need to be coming to the Select Board's office already certified by the town clerk. So I just want to make that.
Okay, so they need to be, you all understand that, they need to be certified first by the town clerk, the 100 signatures, and then we'll process them. Thank you, I'm Mike Barbieri. Okay, interviews and appointments. At our last meeting on August 7th, we discussed setting up a task force to explore municipal broadband fiber to the home and town Wi-Fi. The board chose to, with the recommendations of the town manager, assignments, to form an advisory group to explore municipal broadband options, with the charge of bringing back recommendations to the Select Board. There was a posting that went out to the community on August 8th, seeking interest in task force, and we have received 12 applications. There's a memo attached to the agenda detailing the residents who put their name forward to be interviewed. Does the board want to discuss interviewing these applicants one by one, or should we interview as a group? One question, we have 15 people who had signed up. How many people we have here tonight? Do you know?
I assume a lot of people are here for that.
Two, three, four, five, six? All right, seven. So.
I prefer to interview them one by one. I think in a group, we're never gonna get much there, but I know it will take a while, but.
Yeah. Any other suggestions, two by two?
Yeah, that's fine, or we could have, you know, three or four folks come up together and, you know.
Yeah, I think that.
Answer questions.
Yeah. I was gonna say, if we had maybe a larger group, like three or four, like Vinit said, since we have a pretty long meeting as it is.
Yeah, we do have a lot of stuff on the thing. Would you guys be agreeable with that?
Yeah, I just had a question, Mike. Do we have the supporting documents for everyone?
There were some people who did not supply resumes or cover letters, but I'd agree that is suggested.
And did the letters of interest just say, I'm interested in them?
Yeah, just emails just expressing their interest.
Okay. Okay, so the names is on the schedule, Mary Crosby? No?
And like I said before, some people did not confirm that they were gonna be, so I just listed everyone.
Peter Worley, why don't you come up the table? Yavav Krishna? Are you here?
He's on Zoom.
I saw his name on Zoom.
He's on Zoom?
Yeah.
All right, maybe we'll. All right, let's do two like this, and then we'll expand. So thank both of you, thank you for your interest in this committee, and I guess we'll start with our folk, with a person here, Peter, if you could start. And so according to your resume, you have a pretty extensive background, and so what got your interest in joining this task force?
Yeah, so.
Oh, your name and address.
I'm sorry, my name is Peter Worley, 86 Long Meadow. There's kind of a perfect storm of a number of things coming together. This is just an area of interest professionally, skill set, something I've done as a trade with data networking, working with businesses and internet service providers and vendors for a number of years. And at the same time, I'm somebody who works from home quite frequently, and I suffer along with my Comcast connection, just like everyone else does when it works. And I paid a big bill, I recently cut it back, and I've, as part of my interest, I've had an eye on what they're doing in Chickpea and Hagewam and some of our other surrounding towns, and how people are kind of taking this into their own hands a little bit and trying to get away from the large corporations and have an alternative that's maybe a little bit more affordable, provides good quality, and that we as a town have some ownership and management interest over. I'll say that there are some interesting small companies in the area that are providing fiber-based internet services that are not Comcast. I think it is worth the time investigating those, seeing if maybe those are perhaps a good fit for us. Some, I think you guys are familiar with like a Whip City or GoNetSpeed. And talking to our surrounding neighbors, seeing what they're doing, it seems like a very common project that the area is very interested in. And if we can take some level of the initial footwork off ourselves and hear about what other communities are doing, I think that would make a lot of sense. So I don't know if that fully answered your question.
That's a good start. And Mahami Krishna, could you just tell us a little bit about why you're interested in this position or this board?
Sure. Hello, everyone. My name is Krishna, I am on Level 16 SAP. Yeah, so I guess, you know, I probably don't have the right, you know, sort of like hardware credentials that are required for this, you know, role, but I consider myself an internet native, like coming from India. I sort of, you know, applied for my college, you know, got the job, everything was through internet for me, so I kind of see it as a basic need. And, you know, just like others have mentioned, you know, working from home, upload speeds are not that great. And I've also noticed that a lot of communities that actually introduce fiber have seen many businesses come up, make it easy for them to, you know, create more jobs and the economy grows, and there's been a correlation between having fiber introduced in a community and the economy for that community growing. So that just kind of got me interested in, you know, kind of being in modern community, maybe use some of my skills and, you know, make the community a little bit better.
Great, thank you. Any questions from board members?
Go ahead. So Peter, you mentioned reliability of Comcast, which I, we, my house is not bad, but I hear from people all the time, they do have issues, but you mentioned big corporations. If these small companies start expanding and all of our neighbors start using them, is there a, well, I guess, I have two questions. One, are they inherently more reliable? And two, if they get too big, are they, then, are we gonna have the same issues we have with Comcast?
Yeah. Fantastic question. So I think in terms of reliability, I'd rather be much squeaker wheel, smaller pool, right? So if you have Comcast, who knows how many customers they have, let's say 100 million, it's probably more than that. They don't really care too much if one person has some intermittent problems from time to time, it's a small problem. But, you know, if we as a community are operating our own fiber internet, or if we're working with a small local company, that's a much larger percentage of your customers that's experiencing a problem. So, you know, I do think there is something there. The concern you have about perhaps like a consolidation maybe of small, local, private companies is definitely a concern of mine as well. So that's, I think that's perhaps the biggest drawback of going with one of those companies, because they could get gobbled up by a larger company, and then you went through all this work and you, you know, jumped through a bunch of hoops, and in 10 years, you're just a Comcast customer again. So that's, I think there's gonna be a lot of trade-offs while investigating these different options, and that's certainly a concern of mine as well.
And Krishna, would you want to weigh in on this question?
Yeah, for sure. So I think that's, that is definitely a huge concern in terms of monopolies, and we all know how Comcast operates, you know, in this area. So I think, I think it depends on how we align the incentives. I don't really know how the budgeting for this is gonna work. I think in terms of how we allocate grants for these people to set up the infrastructure, and how long those grants are available to these companies could be a lever in terms of like how we can kind of have some sort of control over this company, as well as, you know, making them go too big and sort of act against the customer's interest. I guess that's one thing that comes to my mind. But also having more local, you know, members of the community involved in the company and, you know, be a part of the company is also a good way, I think, just in spirit to have people have more ownership and, you know, not kind of go in the direction of, you know, big companies.
Okay, thank you. Mark Gold?
Thank you, Tom. I've got a few questions I'm gonna be asking, everybody the same ones, so hopefully people at least get a chance to speak to it. If you don't get, you know, if you speak to it, I won't ask you a question. I do want to just, Peter, respond to your question. I lived in town before cable. Our first cable provider was a company called Media One, who are now Comcast. We didn't have any say about whether Media One got bought by, somebody who got bought by somebody who got bought by somebody who now got bought by Comcast. So sometimes you don't get to say who you have, and I think people here recognize it. So my questions that I'm gonna ask people to speak to are the following. You know, what should the role of the town be in a fiber optics or Wi-Fi or internet system? You know, should we be the owner? Should we be the operator? Should we just facilitate it? You know, can you, if you know, speak to, or you're familiar with build-out costs? You know, we've talked about laying fibers from door to doors in the millions of dollars, if not the tens of millions of dollars or beyond, and I think, I just try to get people's opinions on, you know, build-out and how people see that. And the other thing is, you know, ultimately, should the town owner, as Peter, you may have indicated, you know, do we just get one of these other companies and have a relationship with another company who owns it? And what people think of those? So if you, Peter, could just try to speak to a couple of those, and then maybe Krishna can speak to them, and we'll get everybody else to talk about those. And these are opinions, not definitives, and nobody's holding you to it in the long haul. It's just trying to get your sense of what you think on these things, this one.
Build-out cost of an entire community is, would be way over my head. In my opinion, it'll be astronomical, probably, no matter what. But I think most of these passive optical networks that folks are deploying in local communities are aerial, so they ride across the existing utility pools, poles, they're, I can't even guess what it actually costs, but I think compared to at least bearing fiber or some other technologies, it's relatively reasonable. Now, what exactly that means, I don't know. Long Meadow ownership, I think that's actually something we should try to, or the task force should try to make a decision on early on, so you can pick a path and kind of go down a path. There's, ownership gives us independence, it's an asset, it's potentially something that a town could have some sort of revenue stream off of, but there's quite a bit of risk for having to maintain that. There has to be staff and trucks and support, it's a lot that goes along with it. I don't even know if this is possible, but a third option is potentially building out and owning our own infrastructure, for example, like the fiber optic cables that go on poles, but using a third-party vendor to operate, maintain, and support it. I don't know if that's a thing, but I'd sure like to know, it seems like a good medium.
All right, and Krishna, would you want to weigh in on this?
For sure, yeah. Again, I'm definitely not a domain expert on this, I have not looked at the financial statements of any of the internet companies, so my numbers, you know, my PPE gear might be totally off. But however, I did live in Estonia, which is a country that, a country that just basically has internet everywhere, that comes from internet as a basic need, just like food, water, and shelter. And they just make it available, and it's all fiber net, and it is a relatively new country, so it was easy for them to make it happen, but it's just out there. That's one thought I have, which, you know, if I were to just go by based on what I think the country, like the community should do, that's why I would, I would be leaning down to that. But I'm also looking at a country like India, where a lot of the stuff is leased. The government does own a lot of the lines, the infrastructure, but it's even from the build-out to operation, a lot of stuff is leased to private companies. It's a kind of a mix of what sort of what nation owned, and also a little bit of free-market capitalism going on there, but it leased out for a certain amount of time, like 20 years or something. So there's two thoughts that I think we could potentially pursue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you know, I think the questions that Josh and Mark asked are questions that I think are great questions that the task force will be exploring, and so I'm excited to do that. I think the questions that I'm most concerned with in asking everyone that's come to speak with us today is just, what experience and perspective would you bring to the task force that maybe someone else wouldn't? And just kind of a question of, you know, what kind of value would you add to our working group?
Yeah. So, yeah, you know, I think what I bring from a personal level is, this is a domain, you know, I follow no matter what. Any day I'm looking at the news, I'm interested in technology, I read the Wikipedia pages on fiber optics. So it's definitely a passion and something I'm interested in no matter what, just from the technology side. As far as skill set and things I can sort of materially bring to the task force, in my professional capacity, I commonly work on designing, budgeting, building out, managing projects, and it just happens to be in this same arena of technology, and specifically in data networking. And very used to being, working in between vendors and finance folks and the end-users, customers, which is half our residents, half you all, and being able to translate some technical terminology and fill in some gaps, and have a broad general understanding of all the pieces, might not have, be able to go all the way deep on the finance or all the way deep on some part of the networking, but being able to kind of congeal it all and help facilitate some of the communication understanding.
Great, thanks. And Krishna, would you want to weigh in on that?
For sure, yeah. I, like I said, I definitely don't have a lot of domain expertise here, but at the same time, having started my own internet company and having run it for multiple years, and having organized, you know, multiple TEDx events in different countries, I feel like I can bring a lot of organization, accountability, setting concrete milestones and delivering them while working closely with the community. I think that's probably what I can offer.
Okay, great, thank you.
I just have one thing. Just because we didn't mention, you know, in our call, we just asked for a lot of interest, we didn't ask for resumes, and some of you all sent resumes. If everyone else that didn't send a resume could send their resume, I think that would just help us evaluate, you know, everyone's experience better, and also it just kind of puts everyone on an even playing field. So if everyone could maybe do that, could we say like by Friday to the same email address? That'd be helpful.
Great, okay. And thank you, Peter, thank you, Krishna. And is Stephen Locke here? How about Estelle Baye? Just come through, please join us. And then Benjamin Tansky?
Present.
You want to come up and join? And then Brian Weiner? Okay, and how about Lani Silver? Why don't you come up? Do the three of you, and we'll start with just your name and your address, and then tell us a little bit of your interest in the position, and why don't we start with Estelle? Well, because you're in order.
Hi, good evening. I'm Estelle Jordan, Bake is my middle name and my maiden name. I live 756 Long Meadow Street, and I was encouraged to apply for this through my husband. He is part of the, what is it, Historic District Commission. He's been part of it for a while, his name is Jonathan Jordan. So we're both in public service as in career, we're both in the Air Force, and so we'd love to be further the assistance to our community as well. So full-time job, I work in the Connecticut Air National Guard as Communications Commander. So after college, I've always been in some sort of form of security. I started my career in intelligence, and then I transitioned more specifically to cyber. So I've worked at DC, Korea, I taught a little bit at Yale. So then I fully came here because of my husband and got a full-time job in the Connecticut Guard to oversee the whole communications department. So what I could bring to the table, to this team, is I'm sure, you know, a lot of people have different diverse skill sets, but mine is coming from a military background and military perspective, and this job seems seamlessly aligned what I do every day, because I work with different Connecticut telecommunications company, two different ones, always, you know, juggling which phone service or which internet line works best for our base. So it's my, one of the several responsibilities. So when my husband showed me about this, you know, task force, and I was happy to be part of it, or want to be part of it, because I understand a lot of people coming to Long Meadow, because after the pandemic, people are teleworking, and, you know, it's definitely asset that we need to strengthen, but also I'm interested to see why this task force was initiated, because I'm all about understanding the problem first and then providing the solution. So if I were to be part of this team, I'm, I'll be interested to know, is it the issue with availability, or is it the issue with, I guess insecurity is maybe close to integrity, like in terms of like quality of service that all the residents have? And then as a team, come up with different solutions and way forward. So that's a little bit about me and my background, and also aligns with my. So that's a little bit about me and my background and also aligns with my higher education. So, yeah.
Okay. Well, a lot of your questions will be answered, you know, once you're on the committee, you know, we'll talk about all the things, competition, quality of service and all, everything. So, thank you. And next would be maybe Benjamin?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good evening. Benjamin Tansky, 130 Crestview Circle. I moved here in 2020. I'm in the internet business. I'm in the infrastructure business, built a private fixed wireless network infrastructure in New York City and New Jersey. It's one of the largest private networks in the biggest, baddest cities in the country. So it's a wonderful service. And I'm interested in being on, in the group or hopefully being in the group is just bringing some of the expertise here. F T T H, Fiber to the Home, sounds nice. Buzzword, is it feasible? I just did a quick look. You're looking about approximately $80,000 per route mile. Town's about 15, 15 square miles approximately. That's just scratching the surface. Don't ever use that number. That number is fake. But why am I bringing up the fixed wireless? Fixed wireless is a fantastic endpoint solution. You can have fiber rings around the town and you can have endpoints to the home using fixed wireless. There are a number of homes in town that have DirecTV antennas. Fixed wireless antennas are half the size of a DirecTV antenna and give tremendous amounts of speed and reliability. So you want to answer some of the questions? I wrote down some of your questions. Mr. Gold here, what experience do I bring to the table? Kind of touched on that. I have a vast rolodex of hardware manufacturers, integrators, you know, a lot of this has to come down to, in my opinion, the town should own this network. This should be a municipal service. We should get someone potentially build the network. We take it over. This is a tremendous asset. We should run dark fiber in the community. Dark fiber is unlit fiber. We'll tap into the data center in Springfield. We can use the water towers. I sat here when I first moved to town several years ago, suggesting a fixed wireless build in town. I looked at doing the work. It is a ton of work and I'm glad we're sitting here now discussing this. We can use that water tower to go back to the data center, bring main feeds in and then branch out from there. Half the town does have underground utilities, which will be addressed in a feasibility study for fiber or fixed wireless to the home. But I'm a believer in a mix of technologies. Fiber to the home is not feasible. If you're going to, if we're going to say we're going to bring fiber to every home, it's going to die on the vine. You're going to have a sliver of town getting this. I don't think it's the right approach. I think a hybrid approach is, is the right approach. I have a podcast. I say hybrid is not the solution in metropolitan areas, but in rural communities like this, a hybrid solution is a fantastic solution. Yes, the town should own it, Mr. Gold. The town should tremendously, definitely own it. We can, we can sell capacity to other people that want to access our residents in town. This is a tremendous asset. We can also prop up smart poles, utility poles, using this dark fiber, which in itself will again enhance the community. We can put access points on all these light, light poles and have a blanketed network throughout town. So there's a lot we can do and owning it is definitely in the cards. What, what should the role of the town be? The town, one of your questions, the town should vet people to build out this network. I don't think the town should build it out. I think we should pay someone to build it out, but I think we should take it over and then run it and have a group to run this. To answer your question, yeah, there's a lot of remote workers. I for one, remote worker. And I have a ping, a ping, I'm not going to get all technical, but I have a tracer out open on my computer. And Comcast has such terrible packet loss and latency. There's nothing you can do about it because it's coming over an old coax connection, which is a, is a reliable connection. But if you're using it to work all the time, it's not symmetrical. Symmetrical means you have the same upload and download speeds. Fiber optic and fixed wireless does, does do that. There was an article last week that said, as much as it pains me to say this, the larger carriers added on 860,000 subscribers to their fixed wireless access networks. So carriers are migrating to fixed wireless. And I see in town, we have smaller cellular nodes on random streets. You need to have densification. You need to have more of these small nodes for our cell phones to have high speeds. But why should the carriers get, do this themselves? We can get this ourselves. We can do this. We have right of way on utility poles. I don't want to keep going here, but I'm.
You've covered a lot of ground. It sounds like you have a lot to share with the.
I would love to, you know, just to put my, put my hand in the bucket and stir it around and see what comes out really. Because there's, it's a tremendous opportunity for the town and I'd love to see this to succeed.
Great, thank you. And Kalani?
Hi, I'm Kalani Silva. I live in 19 Animal Road. Been in town for 20 years. Father of three, married, wife's been in town her entire life. Been in the industry for roughly 26 years. I do work at home. I've worked at home for the last eight years on an Xfinity Comcast connection. My work life has involved a lot of metro networks like this. Two of my larger projects was Bureau of Indian Affairs, where we set up a metro network like you're looking for. So I have some experience all firsthand in that project, as well as I set up a statewide network for New Hampshire, which included law enforcement, federal off-ramp integrations, you name it. So I've worked in town here a few times. I was actually on the network of this school prior to its build. Consulted with the town manager previous about the fiber plant between here and East Long Meadow and Springfield. So I knew a little, know a little bit of the situational awareness of what's going on. When the task force was asking for submissions, I of course had to, had to apply. I felt compelled to do my part to, to serve.
Thank you. Sounds great. Any other questions? Ben, I just want to give kudos to you. I remember when you interviewed for the cable committee and this, you brought this up. And it's been percolating in my head since then. We didn't move terribly fast on it, but we're here now. So I thank you for coming back. Appreciate it. I said a question for Estelle. Is there, for the kind of networks we're looking at, are there security issues that you'd be suited for? Is that something we should be worried about that people are connecting? Like if we connect to Comcast, I don't know if we're, I assume we're not networked with everyone that's on Comcast. But is there things that we should be thinking about on that regard?
That's a very broad question. I would say it really depends. I mean, I, I, you know, as a, so from my background in cybersecurity, like I, well, I, I mostly dealt with a lot of, let's say adversarial threats. Instead of more like targeted individual threats. I mean, there's some people, you know, pretend to be an FBI van and they go on people's Bluetooth, you know? So there are different techniques that I'm aware of. But I think it's hard to say for me that it's, you know, common sense because I know a lot of people are very vulnerable to having their, let's say, you know, Wi-Fi open, Bluetooth open, all that basic things. That's what I would think like a biggest threat might be. But in terms of at home, like, you know, is there certain security you should be concerned of? I mean, I think it depends, you know, the knowledge and the people that you hire. So, right?
Could I chime in there?
Yeah, definitely chime in.
It's the network topology that you set up. So we, you know, we have tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of users and they're isolated. So without getting too technical, they're separated using what's called VLAN technology, right? So you can be, we can all be in the same room right here, connecting to the same Wi-Fi network. But your MAC address on your phone is unique. Everyone's MAC address on their devices, your phone, your computer, your laptop, your fridge, your toaster oven, whatever. And that MAC address is associated with your account. Without, again, without getting too technical here, whoever's going to manage and build this network will have to have a customer facing portal and an admin portal. And in that portal, as residents, we'll have unlimited devices we can add into our accounts. And those devices will be our own in the network. So essentially if we decided to do this and we had a network throughout town, you could theoretically roam around town, connected to the Wi-Fi if we put up access points on the poles and be connected to your private network. So it's totally secure.
Sounds good. Any other, anything we haven't heard? Okay. Well, great. Thank you, three of you. And we'll be in touch with the decision for the next meeting. Mike McLean, are you here?
Yes.
Okay. You want to have a seat? And Mark Wojcik? Okay. How about Henry Lanewatt?
It's me.
All right. And how about Daniel Golden? And how about David Hart? Any chance Benjamin Brown's here? All right. Why don't you pull up Mr. Hart and we'll knock off this at the end of the list. Great. So let's, we'll go in order that I called you up. So Mark, you want to start with your name, address and your?
Sure. I'm Mike McLean. I live on 164 Bytown Road. My background in IT starts in the military. I was in the network engineering field, mostly working in exactly this, long haul communications and fiber, et cetera. Stayed in IT for a very long time and enrolled. Very recently I was a leader in an organization overseeing the IT department where I negotiated contracts and configured a lot of remote sites for network communications. As I've talked about before with other folks, I mean, for me, it's the same thing. I'm living in the town. I'm very interested about having a better service provider, something that's more reliable, something that is cost effective and something that we can own as a town. I think there's, I agree that there's a lot of value in, in being able to take ownership of this. There are other towns in the state that are doing this and they're, my friends that live in those towns are constantly bragging to me about how much better their internet is. So it's definitely a great opportunity there.
Okay, thank you. And Henry Lanewatt?
Hi, everyone. Henry Lanewatt, 16 Massachusetts Avenue. I don't have all of this IT experience that these guys do. I was a corporate educator and I worked from home. I was a training manager for a national company. And once the pandemic hit, I went completely online training and did it out of, did it out of my upstairs office. And so I had a, I've got a bank of computers that I was operating on and was able to, able to maintain and to, and to do my job. I was always prepared with a hotspot on the phone if the world fell apart and it got very close a couple of times. I have about 175 different smart devices in my house that I'm managing. And I did tell Xfinity, well, years ago, I cut the cable, probably 15 years ago, and I have an antenna on my roof, just like the old days with mom and dad. Pick up 40 channels over the air, high def, better than you can get. So when the Xfinity, when Verizon offered their Wi-Fi service, I jumped because I wanted to tell Xfinity to go away. And I hooked it up by living the south end of town and went to the Verizon Home 5G. And I kept it for about a month. But there were at least three times that I lost complete connection and my life support was gone. And I just called them up and said, I can't do it. So I actually right now have Xfinity for $35 a month. People say you can't do it, but you can if you go away for a while. I downloaded my speed, so my speed is reduced, but I, I run H D TVs and a network there. I guess some of my, what I would say is my strength is I'm, I'm active in the community. I administer groups. So if I don't have the technical expertise, I can be a, an ombudsman or a spokesperson when we start having to talk to the community. I did a little research before we came and I saw that there is a grant that needs to be, have action taken on by spring. And there are 10 municipally owned broadband networks in the state right now. And there are several other towns that are pursuing it right now. So it looks like we could be at 20 in Massachusetts. So we, you know, we are probably at the right time to do it, like the other, the other folks said. And it's something that we need to do to get control of. There's just, it looks like there's about a quarter million dollars that's available to us for a grant, but it can't be a study grant. It can't, you know, it has to be a grant in implementation of some, of some way. And that's what I would bring, I guess.
Well, great. Thank you. It's, it's good to have a group worker. Yes.
Hey, good evening. David Hart, 30 Windward Road, relatively new to Long Meadow, moved in the end of 2019. So what brings me here and why do I want to do this? I think there's a great opportunity just to get back to the town. At the same time, I think it's never a better opportunity for us to look at building out our own network for something that's going to become as critically important as power and fuel to the home. The need for data, the need for speed is going to far outstrip our coaxial cables that are on the wires today or on poles today. I think that our pole network is aging, that the opportunity to put fiber underground at the same time, while you do that, lay a conduit big enough to maybe eventually carry power and start to look at being our own power provider or power delivery network. We won't produce our own power, but we could do that. I've done some research on this. I think that there's plenty of opportunity for us to become our own network operator. Versus, so a company like Whip City Fiber is, for all intents and purposes, another Comcast. They're a company that provides the service. They own it and it's not as open as we probably like it to be. In talking to some of the residents in the town, I think people are looking for, they're looking for choice and they're looking for some financial relief from a publicly traded monopolistic company, right? And candidly, I have a very good friend who's working at another town and bringing this to fruition there. And so there, already kind of a little bit down the path, they've estimated that the cost per home is going to be about $3,500. I haven't vetted that out yet, but I have no reason to believe that their numbers aren't sound. And that's basically just getting conduit, getting a conduit and fiber into the ground and up to the home. And essentially, you know, when you stop to think about it, the basic simplicity of providing internet service, you're basically providing a static IP address to each home. That is the extent of a network operator. Then the providers come in after that. So the ability for the town to create revenue off of network providers who can do, and so Comcast may choose to be a network provider in the town of Long Meadow. Same with others. And there are, there's a number of reasons why to consider the privatization of this. Security is one. There's a couple of companies out there now that are basically doing it with the ability to almost instantly set up private networks. So that if you're conducting bank transaction, you can log in under a, under the VPN before the handshake is done. You're basically already out of, after the handshake is done, you're out before anyone's even realized the transaction was taking place. So that type of security is only going to become more important as the world relies more upon the, the internet and the ability to get to technology. Trying to answer a lot of Mark's questions in with the reasons why I thought I would like to be a part of it.
Okay, thank you. And Benjamin?
Hi, Benjamin Brown, 8 Ossio Lane. I've lived here my entire life. As Mr. Gold stated, I remember when Media One put cable into our house growing up. I work at UMass Amherst as an Assistant Director of Networking. We manage 35,000 daily clients across 150 buildings with a fiber plant of about 1,000 miles. Additionally, UMass is actually a self-funded ISP. We provide internet to all the other UMasses, the community colleges, the DOT. And we are the operator of the state's fiber plant across all the highways. The trend in the fiber to the home world right now is actually you build out your infrastructure. You pay a maintenance company to maintain the plant. And then if you can get your fiber all the way to One Summer Street in Boston, which is where the internet is in Massachusetts, residents can just go on a portal. The town negotiates with several ISPs and then they can pick and choose from different rates and different speeds as they want to. That's what a lot of the towns are doing that are building out their own fiber plants. You could totally do that with fixed wireless as well. And, you know, there's a lot of ways to get to Boston. You don't have to dig your own fiber all the way there. There are middle hall providers that can get you from Springfield, One Federal Street in Springfield, all the way to One Summer Street, UMass being one of them. And I think it's a great thing for the town to do and, you know, it certainly would increase competition and be a much more free market economy and internet in the town.
Great. What a great, great combination of talents. Any questions for this group?
Just wondering, any of you, just, how'd you hear about the task force since we didn't do a really great job publicizing it?
Facebook post.
Same here.
I think so. It's Facebook.
It's all we need to know.
Len, were you hoping somebody would say the app?
I was just curious, yeah.
I get the alerts. I get the alerts.
I get the alerts. I get the alerts.
Oh.
Oh, where's the app? Okay.
If I, I have a question. Now, you mentioned the grant. I was under the impression that the grants were only for towns that had below like a 20% connectivity. So it's really for the hill towns to kind of get up to the speed, which is why, which would be so interested in helping the towns, that sort of thing.
Well, I looked into it, and they said that it, they got Braintree, Holyoke, Shrewsbury, Concord, Leverage. It's...
Oh. Maybe, maybe I saw the wrong grant post.
There's a couple. That's, you're, you're talking, I think, of the last mile grant? That's last mile connectivity, which is the hill towns and getting things from center of town out to the people who need it. I think that's the difference.
I will say, we're, UMass is an active partner with Mass Broadband, which is, you know, which is actually sort of guiding a lot of people in this adventure. And there are a lot of good anecdotal stories about how to make this happen through that group, as well as they have partners around the country that they interface with as well.
Great, yeah. Well, this is great. Appreciate it.
How big is our committee, Mike?
We have nine square miles, 5,200.
I thought you said community.
As of right now, it's not set in stone. I think we threw around some numbers at the last meeting, but...
I think you're thinking the same thing I'm thinking, Josh.
Yeah, most groups...
The quality of candidates that we have.
I know, it is. But most groups try to be effective, you know, like, less than 10, you know, if we could. But, but we'll see.
I think the fact that we have so many good candidates is people want this. And we never get 14.
It's very exciting. And, and like you say, we're not alone. We just had a regional select board meeting in Wilbraham, and the other towns were all very excited about where they were at different stages and are willing to help us out. So that's, that's great. And, oh, yeah.
I was just gonna, yeah, definitely. I was just gonna comment. And Ethan, when Ethan and I were sitting next to each other at that select board meeting and the folks from Wilbraham, and just so people hear what Wilbraham is doing, they, they're doing a town-owned build-out, fiber to houses, charging $3,500 per house.
That's where I got it from.
To connect, for, for individuals to connect. So you've got it, it's kind of like a Betterment, hooking up to the source system. And, and once they do that, the homeowner can decide who they want as an ISP provider, just as you indicated, right? And, and, you know, it, it's, it's an approach. May not be the right approach for Long Meadow, you know, but it's something to consider. But certainly, from what we heard, that's a great resource for us to tap into, to find out what they learned, what they did right, what they did wrong, and where we might step off from that. I, I wouldn't at all say we need to do what they're doing.
One of my friends is on the committee. He said he'd be glad to share the knowledge of the town of Long Meadow. The only thing I think they have going for us that we don't is that there is that, as you mentioned, there is that fiber running right down Boston Road, turns right on Main Street in Springfield in the back of the federal.
Well, people need to know that Long Meadow, this town of Long Meadow, we have our own fiber optic system. It connects all our town buildings. So, and we own it. You know, originally, we put it in, and Verizon put it in, we leased it, and then we bought it. So all of you paid for it. We voted for it at a town meeting five years ago, something like that, four or five years ago. So it, you know, goes down the main roads in town and it connects this building with all the town. The only town building not connected, I believe, is the old DPW. We didn't take it down the, no?
There's fiber down there now.
Oh, there is now?
Yeah, it was a separate project.
Okay. But, so, we have that backbone through the town of Long Meadow.
I, I remember when I was negotiating a contract for the bank, you know, looking at where the fiber's being run through. There's a major Verizon hub that runs right through here. That's just one.
And Route 5, because Bay Path connects to a fiber system too, and it goes to Federal Square in, in Springfield, which is the, I'm going to call it the regional hub. I don't know.
It's, it's, it's the Springfield hub.
Springfield, right. But, but, you know, we, we have Route 5 and a few others down William Street and a couple of other things, so.
Right.
We put it all in.
Yeah. And, and they, when they talked about, once folks are connected to their house, you know, there's competition between the ISP providers and prices go down. And so, so that's what we're, we're hoping, and we're, we're glad to commit.
They're looking at 100 up, 100 down at $9.95 a house.
That'd be good.
Yeah, it's like we're starting from the bottom already, no matter what we do.
100 up, 100 down would be huge.
No, Wilbraham quartered us 3 gig, 2 gig up, 2 gig down, something like that.
Wow. Well, you, you can get that, but I'm saying, they're saying...
That's what they're saying, that their, their fibers...
Capable of. But they're, they're, they're looking at, you know, for people that don't need that, 100 up, 100 down for $9.95 a month is pretty darn sweet. It's a lot better than what we got right now.
You can stream videos.
...that can do 100 gig or more.
Yes. Yeah, you have to consider the future.
Right.
Anybody else? Do we have any others?
Before you leave, no, this is it for tonight.
Mike, who's on the queue?
Okay. Anybody from our, from this group?
Yeah.
No. But David, I, I grew up in Rochester, New York. I hope, you mentioned you spent some time there, right?
Unfortunately, I was consumer imaging, and somebody had the good sense at, at one point to say they didn't want to live in Rochester, so we were based in Atlanta, Georgia for the consumer imaging.
Oh, so you weren't there. Okay.
I've actually been, I've been in State Street twice, Kodak Park many times, but never had to actually physically work, work out of there.
All right, because you don't run into too many folks from, from my hometown.
Tom, a couple of quick questions. We had, we had some people who apparently indicated interest but aren't here this evening.
Yep.
Are we going to try to do this again at our next meeting?
Well, I know some of them had sent in...
Yeah, some of them. We've got resumes and things like that, but...
I'll, I'll confirm the ones that, there may have been a couple that confirmed that they weren't going to be here late afternoon today, and I may have missed those. So I'll narrow those down, and then I guess we could decide if we wanted to do that. I, I was under the impression that we'd be making appointments by the next meeting, but...
Unfortunately, the bylaws require that appointees be interviewed. So unfortunately, we can't work off, even though some of the resumes may be good, we can't work off just submissions or applications. Bylaws require an, an interview. It also requires that we wait at least a week before we make an appointment, which is generally the next meeting.
Yeah, if you just follow up with the folks that weren't here, let us know.
We'll see. All right, great. Of course, after hearing you spoke to me tonight, they may be tentative. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, and next we have some, another interviews for a board committee. And the next would be Catherine Ferraro is here for the Council of Aging Board Directors.
Are you Catherine? Are you Catherine? Oh, hey, you can come on up.
Catherine, we just had a volunteer luncheon for, at the, at the adult center.
I'm sorry, I'm very hard of hearing.
Oh, okay. I'll try to be a little louder. But at the luncheon...
Sorry.
There was a luncheon on last, was it Friday, right? And, and I was being asked, is there any more applicants for the Council of Aging Board? And I said, "I think we got one more," and so here you are. Could you start with introducing yourself and giving us your address? And then your interest in being on the Council of Aging?
My name is Catherine Francis Ferrero, and I grew up in the Hungry Hill section of Springfield. And 1992, I bought a house on 183 Merryweather Drive. And since 1992, I've been a member of the Long Meadow Senior Center. And I graduated from American International College with high honors. And I have a master's degree in guidance at the University of Mass. I was, I'm a retired school teacher from Springfield. And I have a few ideas that I would like to suggest to the council. And I just would like to volunteer my services.
Great. Thank you for stepping up to the plate, so to speak. Any questions? Yeah, Josh?
Do you still play pitch at the senior center?
I'm sorry.
Do you play pitch at the senior center still?
The pick and game pitch? He must have seen you playing cards.
I'm very tired of hearing.
That's okay. I'll sit over here.
I'm sorry.
Do you play pitch, pitch at the senior center still?
Yes, I, I, I led the game for about 20 years. And we had about 40 or 50 people coming, and we had a good time. This was at the old senior center. And everybody is upset now that we can't play. And I mentioned to Jim Layden that this is a brand-new senior center, and we have no card room. I mean, we grew up playing cards. I mean, we didn't have TV or anything. So we should have had a card table. The people that play board games have to sit on the aisles, and everybody bumps into them and watches them play. They have no privacy. And I also would like to put up a suggestion box, and each suggestion should be answered. And I have a few ideas.
Great. Sounds good. Any other questions or...? Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming in tonight. And we will be back in touch with you, all right, about the appointment.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next interview is Douglas Taylor for the Energy and Sustainability Committee. If you just start with your name and address, Douglas?
Hi, Doug Taylor, 68 Northfield Road.
Okay, and you're interested in the energy and sustainability? Is there any special reason you want to be part of this group?
So it's not quite up my alley, but something I'm interested in, trying to fight climate change and the effects it's going to bring on the world. There's only so much you can do at home. There's, there's other things I could do, but it seems like it's preaching to the unconvertible, let's say. So this, this seems like a good avenue for me to get involved at a local level. I have good ideas from big and small. For example, there's a nice Facebook page that this committee has, but it has 64 followers compared to 3,200 at the town level, so big gap there. Up to, can the town be as bold to say, "We want to be carbon neutral" by pick a year? And, and go for something like that. I'm a retired actuary. Retired means I've got time. I've got, I like to do research and, and learn about things and make sense of things. I think I'm good at getting into the details, but coming up with the big picture as to how things can operate. I have not worked on the property casualty side as an actuary. I've worked in the life and health side, so I have not been exposed to all the fun that, say, the reinsurers are having with flooding in Florida and places like that. But this, I think, would give me an opportunity to dig into stuff like that, so.
Well, I, I think you're right. It's going to take a lot of people, Jake's making a little bit of extra effort to, to move things around. I mean, the town has responded well to some programs like recycling. I think people are really doing a great job and have done that for a long time with plastic and paper. And, you know, we need other ways to expand on our energy policy. I mean, I've worked in Greenfield, and the first time I ever really saw an electric car was they had just a gathering for people to look at electric cars and talk to owners and eventually bought one. And, you know, I don't think we've ever had anything like that in our town. And, and we do need people to promote, you know, using electric vehicles and reducing our carbon footprint. So I just stepped up. Any questions from other members of the board? Yes?
Thank you. More of a comment. Douglas did attend one of the committee meetings, because I'm the liaison for the, the group, and just wanted the committee to know that he wasn't appointed yet, but he was still active. And Mark, you were there as well. So.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make that point.
Okay. It also got me away from the in-laws. They're not watching, are they? Just my wife.
So thank you, and we'll be back in touch with you, Douglas, about when we make the decision, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
And next we have Mr. Tom King for the Historical Commission.
Hello, how are you?
I'm all there.
Thanks for having me. I'm Tom King. I live at 73 Birchwood Avenue.
Okay, and you're interested in the committee?
Yes, reappointment. So I've served for two years. I filled a vacancy. I believe it began in 2021, and it has since expired. So I'm looking for a three-year appointment to that commission.
Three years. You'll be around for three years?
I hope so, yeah.
Oh, good. That's good. Any questions for members of the board? Yes.
Mr. King, what, what do you see as some of the, the goals, I guess, of, you know, the attainable goals for the Historical Commission?
Yeah, so there are several, and that's one of the reasons why I'd like to rejoin for another three years. We were successful in securing some Community Preservation Act money to continue the property survey work, and that is for properties up to 1911. And I'd like to clarify with the other commissioners what is the goal of collecting that information. I think there's a fear that having that information might be more restrictive for homeowners. I think it's just a really great opportunity to educate so people understand the home that they're either interested in purchasing or in their living. I also think there's a lot of wonderful overlap with efficiencies in older homes. As someone who owns one and went through the Mass Save program for mini splits, I think a lot of that information needs to be more publicly accessible. And I think that's something that, as someone who went through that process and as someone who really is an ardent supporter, I think that's part of our responsibility of the commission is to make sure that that information is readily accessible. The other, and I believe, Mr. Levine, you signed off on our application. I am really determined to get Long Meadow certified as a certified local government with the state. That would open up a lot of money for projects. And we were unsuccessful in our first application, mostly, I think, because we didn't package it in the bureaucratic way that the state wanted us to. So I am quite committed. And I think that goes to the long-term question. So if Long Meadow is positioned to access additional funding, it really allows for more sustainability for the projects that we're looking for. We also need to undertake our own long-term plan. And we don't have a formal plan, and I'd like to be part of that process as well. I also had served as the designee to the Long, to the, oh, God, Long Plan Steering Committee from the Historical Commission, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, any other questions for, okay, Mr. King, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Let's you know. Thanks for coming in.
My pleasure.
And now we have James Turtelot.
Yeah, just so the rest, yeah, sorry, just so the rest of the board knows, I confirmed with Mr. Turtelot about a month ago after the last meeting, because he couldn't make that one. It just slipped my mind when adding it to the memo, so.
That he'd be here today?
Yes. He's applying for reappointment to the zoning board of appeals.
Well, he's a, he's a known entity. He's, he's been before us many times for his own pleasure and for, to serve us, so.
Thank you. My name is Jim Turtelot. I live at 64 Prinwood Road. I have been a member of the ZBA zoning board of approval for about five years. It's time for a reappointment. I'd like to be reappointed. Although I must admit, I thought about applying to Dave Levinberg for trade to the new task force. But as I thought about it, it was obvious that I would never be smart enough to deal with any of those people. But when it comes to deciding who should be on what lot size and who needs their porch and who doesn't, I'm fine with the ZBA. Land use is interesting. It's always been interesting to me. When I was practicing law, I was also chairman of the planning board in Springfield and later chairman of the zoning board of approval in Springfield. So it's a comfortable spot, and it's a great board. David Levinberg does a tremendous job running it. And we're losing Bianca Damiano, which is a real loss. But I'm sure that Mike or somebody will step in and do that job.
Not Mike.
Not Mike.
I'll be a resource.
Josh? Jim, have you noticed with the new zoning enforcement agents, is that, has that been any interaction with them finding anything that comes before the ZBA? Or is it several...
We haven't had any yet.
They're probably not looking at lot sizes or setbacks, so.
Generally, the enforcement folks, they may have a full agenda doing things to enforce zoning, but we rarely find anybody coming in with a grievance. the zoning, but we rarely find anybody coming in with a grievance. It's usually people being proactive about something they need in a lot that was, that preexisted the zoning, the new zoning.
Right, Mark?
Jim, I think it'd be helpful if you could do kind of a public service announcement to demystify the ZBA or not necessarily demystify it, but take away some of the idea that it's a scary place to go and people don't want to go there because it means you're looking for a very, you know, I think you get a sense of what I'm looking for, so.
Yeah, and you're right. I think some people do feel that way. The Zoning Board of Approval really is, in our town, an opportunity for people to do what they feel they want to do or need to do on their property. And it's rare that the Zoning Board of Approval can't offer some kind of assistance in that task. The rules and regulations within which we act are precise in terms of dimensions, but as far as how you can utilize what dimensions you have, there is plenty of room. So, I don't think there's any reason for folks to be concerned if they feel, "Oh, gee, we have to do this thing and it's going to be awful." It's a very comfortable process. Folks come in, it's informal. They understand where the ZBA is coming from, and it's usually, you know, "We're here to help you do this thing." As long as it makes sense and we can fit it within your lot and the zone regs, it'll work. We also like to hear from neighbors. So, it's important for people to understand that when they come, one of the criteria by which we're required to make a decision is how does it fit into the neighborhood and what indeed do the neighbors think about it? So, if you're coming, it's nice to talk to your neighbors first, make sure everybody's on the same page. Usually, they are, but every once in a while, we'll get somebody who wants to park a car someplace and never talked to Joe next door, who really didn't think it was a very good idea. And when he's asked and says that, that's a little bump in the road for the ZBA to get around. So, I think you're right. There are people that are a little concerned, but there really isn't any reason to be. Ninety-five percent of the folks that come in walk through smoothly, one hearing, no problems, and the other five out of that remaining percentage, four-fifths of them can be really resolved. The rest probably got off on the wrong foot and never should have been there in the first place.
Thank you. That's great.
All right, great. Thank you, Jim.
Okay.
We'll let you know.
Thank you.
All right. So, we have a memo attached to the agenda for appointments to boards and committees. Would anyone like to make a motion for appointments?
Yeah, I'll move that we appoint Linda Glenn to the, reappoint Linda Glenn to the Community Preservation Committee for a three-year term, expiring June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. And I believe that's it, right? So, we now look for the confirmation, the appointment of our finance director. The town manager has been working a long time to get this position filled. She submitted a memo detailing an appointment with the new finance director, Ian Codington, for confirmation of the board in accordance with the charter, and I will pass this over to Lynn Simons.
Thank you. Yes, Tom, you're right. This has been a lengthy process, and I'm happy tonight to present Ian Codington for appointment to the position of Director and Finance, Director of Finance and Administration. Mr. Codington is a certified public accountant, currently working for Massachusetts Municipal Wholesale Electric Company. My memo was slightly revised late today. The memo wasn't, the resume was. But prior to that, Mr. Codington was working for Myers Brothers Kalika, and in this role, he was serving as auditing associate and most recently as an auditing senior associate. He completed audits and review engagements for nonprofit and for-profit entities, planned budgets, and led engagement teams of two or three. Mr. Codington would then present audit findings and results to the various stakeholder groups. Outside of his work with Myers Brother Kalika, Mr. Codington volunteers with the Pioneer Valley Symphony as the treasurer and with Habitat for Humanity. He's also an associate member of the Massachusetts Society of CPAs. Mr. Codington received a bachelor of science degree in business management, accounting concentration from Westfield State University, and a master of science business management from Fishburg State University. I'm pleased to submit Mr. Codington's appointment tonight as the next director of Finance and Administration in accordance with Long Meadow Charter, Article 5-2B. And I do have Ian here tonight to answer questions, and you can learn directly from him about his experience.
Okay. Well, Ian, why don't we give you the first word?
Sure.
Just, anything to add on to what Lynn has told us?
No, I mean, thank you, Lynn, for the opportunity to be appointed for this position. I'm very excited to have this opportunity. In terms of my background, in terms of skills that will bring me the ability to run this position well, I'm very comfortable in front of a board. I'm very comfortable in front of committees, giving presentations, distilling ideas that people need to know and understand. In the world of accounting, accounting is the language of business. You need to be able to understand and explain this to people who might not have a master's in business, a CPA, and be able to interpret laws, regulations, and distill it in such a way that's important and impactful. This is something that I'm very comfortable with, and I think that my background in public gave me a broad understanding of the different industries, whether that be for-profit industries or not-for-profit industries. And I think that that's really important, to have a broad understanding of everything that goes on, because you're exposed to every single facet of an organization. That's something that I'm very excited about, being a director. I have experience with working with people below me, making sure that they have the work they need, the tools they need to succeed, and having the empowerment to do their job well.
Okay, great. So, any questions? Mark, do you want to?
Sure. Ian, thank you for coming in. I'm going to ask you the same question I'm sure Paul Pesterzak asked you, and that is, how do you balance your checkbook?
I use YNAB. So, you need a budget. That's the, it's an online service that, on a monthly basis, I'll use my transactions, my credit cards that go through my checking account to make sure that everything is accounted for, every dollar has a purpose, and make sure that everything is known, tracked, and put towards something of purpose.
And do you balance it to the second decimal place?
As best as I can.
Okay. For those of you who in the audience who may not understand the question specifically of, my mother used to work for a bank, and she said, "If you're a teller and you bounce a check, or, you know, if your account, if it doesn't match up, you could get fired." Because they said, "If you can't take care of your own money, you shouldn't be taking care of the bank." So, that was a very good question, even though people, they like, "Oh, yeah, private account," but it's important. Another big part from over the years of working with Paul is, you know, he's had to keep track of the different money coming in as loans and grants and money we borrowed and working with banks and putting them in accounts. And how much experience do you have working with banks and looking at interest rates and investments? And I don't know how much of that you consider your job or?
Well, in terms of working with banks, I have connections with Florence Bank and People's Bank specifically. We deal with lenders, because lenders bring in, in the public world, they bring in work where we might have clients that need a financial statement prepared or a tax return done. So, building relationships like that is very important in the accounting world as well as in the municipal world, because these are relationships that you're going to have for a long period of time. And speaking to understanding interest rates, I want to make sure that, you know, I keep track of what prime is, you know, the markets are moving from LIBOR to SOFR, so make sure that I'm aware of the changing interest rate market and what that means for long-term debt obligations.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Very important stuff. Great, thank you. Any other questions from?
No, sir.
Josh?
Ian, Paul's already come up a couple of times today, and he's a big figure around here. He's been here a long time. He knows along that inside and out.
Thirty-six years, right?
Yeah, that's it. So, either you or Lynn want to explain what the mentoring process would be? I think that would be helpful, and I think everyone should know who's watching.
Sure, I'm happy to take that. I didn't want to get too far ahead of myself. I wanted to make sure that there was confirmation here tonight, but Paul has expressed his desire to make sure that the town is supported and that Ian is supported, and we have a tremendous opportunity right now to make sure that we pass the baton, if you will, really effectively and efficiently. A lot of the work is cyclical, so I imagine Paul being here certainly right now as Ian onboards, and then as we set the tax rate, go through that process, then as we start building out the budget. He'll get to fade away a little bit in the wintertime, but then come back into the picture as we finalize the budget and present it to you, and then town meeting, and then going through the closeout of the fiscal year, and then really we'll have come full circle by that point. The other thing that is very worth pointing out is the rest of the finance team that is under the finance director. So, we have a town accountant, a treasurer collector, an assessor, and a procurement manager. They're all top-notch. We had quite a hard time filling the assessor position, where Maria has stepped in and is doing a great job really getting up to speed in the assessing world. I know you're all familiar with Eric Coopernell, because she comes to you quarterly with the investment reports. In the background in a lot of this is the town accountant, Jason Ducharme. He's been with the town for quite a while, so he'll be a huge asset to Ian as he gets on board. And then our procurement, I mean, nothing that we buy doesn't go through Chad, and he's been here a long time and will also be a valuable resource for Ian, too. So, we've got Paul and then the rest of that team to round it out, and I feel really confident in moving forward with this appointment.
Will Paul be letting Ian have his money tree?
That did move to a new temporary office for Paul, yeah. He commits that, yes.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, I have another. At MBK, did you, am I correct that you did not audit any municipal municipalities?
So, I had experience with municipal light plants specifically, and I think that that's the only extent that I've had in terms of municipal accounting experience. So, you know, that might be, "Oh, well, he's never worked in municipal since before." I think that really what my skill set comes from, working in public. You have to pick things up that you don't know what they are and get them done and get them done right. I'm very comfortable with taking on new things, taking the time to learn new things. Part of, part of the public accounting arena is getting your CPA exams done. So, that means working long hours and being able to manage the exam studying and passing the exams. I'm not afraid of hard work. I'm not afraid of long hours. One of the stipulations with the new position is getting the certified government accounting certification. That's something that I plan to do within the first year, as I was given three years to do that, but I'm someone who's hungry, someone who's motivated. I want to make sure that that's done timely, because it will make my job easier and make my job, I perform it better.
Sounds good. That's a nice plan. Any other questions? Josh?
Thanks for coming to us today.
Thank you.
Congratulations for getting this far.
Thank you.
But I did, I did write a couple, I had a couple of questions, but I guess the first one's, you know, obviously, we're in good financial standing here in Long Meadow. We have a good bond rating, but what are some of the challenges that you think we face here in Long Meadow?
Well, I think the most important one is the Proposition 2.5 and being at the tax ceiling or the tax levy ceiling. That's something that Paul touched on in the initial interviews that I had. I think that it's really important to understand that, as a community, we expect certain amenities and certain things that are, we all value and appreciate, you know, a nice, a nice school, sidewalks, the adult center, the businesses that support our local community. These are things that we all take for granted, and we need to understand that there's budgetary restrictions on some of these things. What I mean by that is, with Proposition 2.5, we need to be able to monitor what our spending levels are, and if we need to set aside reserves rather than spend up to the limit and risk hitting the ceiling, that's something that I need to be comfortable with dealing with.
Great answer. That's what I was looking for, so thank you. And then also, to Josh's point, I don't have to ask the question again, but I was glad that Josh brought that up in terms of the ramp-up plan and working with Paul. So, I think where you are with your career right now and being hungry, and I'm excited to hopefully, you know, have you on board here, and I like the answers. I like the background, where you are in your career. I think you could do some nice things for the town, so I appreciate you applying.
I think the biggest thing for me, it's one word, it's fulfillment. As you all are the selectmen, you understand, you know, we serve a higher purpose. So, as a public servant, we are looking out for the committee, the community that we either live in, support, or care for. I'm a town resident. I live at 29 Elmwood Ave. I'm getting married in about, let's see, 16 days?
Numbers guy.
But I plan to, I plan to put long-term roots in Long Meadow, and this is a place that I call home. So, I would be proud to represent the community that I live in in the finance director position.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, thank you for being here. I think just listening to you speak tonight, it's very clear that you're very passionate about this work, and, you know, I have full confidence that you're going to do great in this role. And I just want to comment, too, on just the process of getting to the selection. I mean, I think it says a lot that, you know, we went through rounds without selecting someone, because that meant that we were waiting for the right person. And so, that, you know, even though it took a while, it gives me confidence that we have actually, you know, landed the right person. And, you know, I think the plan in place with Paul as a mentor, obviously, we thank Paul for that, but I think that that is, that even, you know, gives me even more confidence that this is the right choice and that, you know, that Paul has interviewed you, met with you, and he feels that, you know, you are someone that could, you know, take his mentorship and that he's willing to do that. I think also speaks volumes, so, yeah, I have no reason, or I should say that I'm excited about this, and it seems like, seems like we landed this one.
Thank you very much.
Great. And I guess the last thing I want you to remember about your first meeting with the select board is that, you know, we really count a lot on our CFO, and we all feel very strong about, and warm, have warm, positive feelings towards Paul. And I think one of the biggest things is, you know, we've, we've had good bond ratings, and we've been able to get good interest rates. And we've had to make some purchases that we didn't get any stake reimbursement for, like in our DPW and our adult center. And we got great interest rates on those, and, you know, as folks look, you know, at the time, people were saying, "Well, I'm not sure of these sort of projects for the town. It's going to cost the town a lot of money." And now, as other towns go to build their adult centers and maybe, and perhaps DPWs, they'll realize what a great price we got and what a great deal. And the CFO, you know, played an instrumental role in making sure that our accounts, we were in good shape to give it interest rates and that we were paying off debt as we could to look very promising to banks. And so, so we look forward to working with you, Ian. We need a motion for, yep?
I'll make a motion that we ratify the nomination of Ian Codington as our chief financial officer.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, okay. You're in.
Just one thing. It's Codington. Just want to make sure.
Get it out of the way now.
Yes. Awesome. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Congratulations. All right. All right. And now, we move to, we have guest speaker. As those of you who've been watching our meetings know that we've made a change in our town council, and we're pleased to introduce the new Long Meadow Town Council, Mead Tellerman Acosta. And there, we have a representative from Mead Tellerman Acosta in attendance tonight. Do you have a seat? Introduce yourself and just give us a little spiel about your, your practice.
Sure. Jay Tellerman, Mead Tellerman Acosta. Glad to be here tonight. Already gotten, hitting the ground running over the summer, trying to pick up on a few things. The learning curve is still there. For those that may need a refresher in our original proposal... proposal, we're a medium-sized firm. We represent about 33 towns as town council all throughout the Commonwealth and multiple counties, including a lot in Hampton and Hampshire, as well as Franklin Counties. We take a slightly different approach. I've been doing municipal town council work for about 25 years. We take a slightly different approach. We're really team-oriented. The way we approach it in this is borne out through our fee proposal and the way we do business, is we want to be part of this team. We don't want to be the law firm where you're concerned come March when the legal budget is dwindling, that you can't pick up the phone because you're going to go over budget. That's not us. That's not the way we operate. That's not the way we charge. We want to be here. We do office hours. We do site visits. We have, all within the flat fee that we charge you on a monthly basis. We never go over the, your yearly allotment for legal fees unless it's something extremely extraordinary. We try and help your boards, your committees, and your officials with issues before they become problems, because that's when things get more expensive and more difficult. We want to be on that ground floor when the problem solving is needed the most, not trying to be reactive to problems after they happen. We have a great interdisciplinary team that covers all facets of municipal law. Lynn's already met a few through phone calls and emails, from contracting to our litigation team, to our real estate team, to general government, to finance. We have folks that can handle all of that without being so large that it's impersonal, or where you don't get a partner who can essentially take charge of any kind of project that you have. So we've been doing this for a while. We're thrilled to be here. We thank you for your confidence in us, especially without meeting us face-to-face first, and look forward to winning your trust. So happy to answer questions about how we operate. I'll be here tomorrow with the planning board, too, so people can come and see how we deal with that. That is my, my second trip to the planning board. Josh?
And that's for the zoning meeting? Or who is it?
Yeah, we were talking about some bylaws and a few other things, some, just kind of scoping out some things, helping out.
Great. Okay, thanks. And you have a question or comment?
Just a comment from one lawyer to another. I, we've been, I've dealt with you a couple times, very impressed with the, your breadth of knowledge and how quickly you pull it up. Sometimes I tell you I'm just a really fast Googler, but you seem to have this stuff around on the tip of your fingers at least, so I appreciate that. And excited to work with you, and I appreciate the, the quick responses we've been getting. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, we aim to be really responsive. You're going to hear from us quickly. You'll all have all of our contact information. We want to help out quickly. Josh and I and Lynn had to jump on something pretty quickly. There was a significant nasty gram that came our way, and we wanted to make sure that we were responsive to the needs and get up to speed quickly. We had some experience in the subject area, so we were able to translate that into what we hope is going to be a good result.
Okay. Mark?
Tallerman, thank you again for coming in. I, a couple of questions. One is, how many attorneys are in your, in your firm? And more importantly, how do you keep them all abreast of what's going on in Long Meadow? You know, we, our history is a single practitioner who kind of knew everything from soup to nuts here and could relate them back and forth with a number of people. How do you plan on, or what systems do you use to keep everybody involved, up to date, and knowledgeable about what the others are doing?
So we're 15 attorneys now, and we're growing a little bit in various departments. It can be a challenge. You're, each town that we represent gets a primary contact person first. So for Long Meadow, that's me. You get a secondary contact person as well. That's Brian. But the other three equity partners in the firm, Kate Federoff, newly named equity partner, she's the head of our labor and employment practice, Lisa Mead, my long-term, longtime partner, and Adam Costa. We are all primary contacts in various towns, so we make it our business to understand. We have a certain amount of experience in feeling out what a town needs. Every town is different. Every select board is different. Every town has their style. Every town has a different set of bylaws. It's sometimes a learning process. So even before we got that fateful email saying we were appointed, we had already started doing homework, just in the off-chance we might even get to talk to you. So it's a lot of work to ramp up, and we hope to still understand that. We're available. Some of the other things that we do to learn how a town operates is we, and it's baked into your fee. We can come out and do office hours from time to time, as Lynn may want to schedule them, so we can meet department heads. We did already have a department head meeting, just so we understand what the daily flow is. You know, who speaks to who? Where is this decision-making tree lie? Where does this one lie? Sometimes understanding where the, where the hierarchy is is really important to us. Obviously, we have to be students of your bylaws as well. Understand whatever, there's very little litigation that's happening right here that we're going to be inheriting, so that, that part's been relatively easy. It's, you know, it's a little bit of a grind at the beginning, but we're already well on our way.
And when you're, take that well-deserved vacation sometime next year, it's Brian who stuff, or some?
So it'll be Brian, and, but there'll be ongoing matters with attorneys already working on them already. Liz Leiden from my office, who's a senior associate and, and does a lot of our contracting work, is already going to be well, kind of entrenched in, with Chad, with Lynn, with other folks on, on ongoing projects. But yeah, if someone has to pick up the phone, I'm almost guaranteeing they'll still be able to get me even if I'm on vacation, but Brian would be available. So we all put our nose to the grindstone. And we enjoy life like everyone else, but we, we try and be as responsive as we can and as available as we can.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just, just wanted to say, you know, it's, I'm happy to meet you tonight. Glad that you came out. And, you know, in looking at your proposal, it was really the breadth of knowledge and expertise and the responsiveness that really stood out. And, you know, that came from other references as well, other municipalities. And I'm glad to hear that so far the responsiveness has been as advertised.
It's a good team here, too, so it makes it easy when the, when the team comes with information and knowledge and good, smart questions, too.
Great. Absolutely. And I guess my only question is, now that you've, you know, been on the ground here for a couple of months, just what are your first impressions have been of just working with, with the town?
I mean, so far, I mean, and it's going to happen a little bit more, but we've worked mainly with Lynn. It's been really smooth so far, from going from like, starting with very little relationship base to now being comfortable emailing back and forth, and I'm sure that's going to increase as we get to a town meeting. So it's, it's already a pretty good relationship, and it's going to get a little stronger. On understanding just more about the town, I was really struck when I was with the planning board a couple weeks ago, how amazingly beautiful that new center is over there, and the facilities, and you understand the work that you all put in to make the assets in this town really shine. So that kind of caring really kind of rubs off, so it makes us just excited to be here.
Right.
And I've done work here before, when I was with then Copelman and Page, now KP Law, and they were your town council. I did some work here many, many years ago on some, on a 40B project or two. So goes back a little bit, dates me a little.
Yes, Dan?
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Mr. Tallerman. Really appreciate it. I guess during the process, the first time around, just to be blunt, I, I had voted for the other firm. And some of my concerns, just from speaking with residents, that came up was, well, we tend to get short on the stick here in Western Massachusetts. This is a firm in Eastern Massachusetts. How can you ensure tonight to the residents of Long Meadow that, you know, we're not just seen as this small town in Western Mass on the map? And how can you ensure that your team will be showing up in person when we're at town meetings, and accessible, and doing the office hours, and things that were on the proposal? So...
I think that that's a reasonable, I mean, the old model was to have something more local. And as we expand further and more into these counties, these more western counties, we've represented Deerfield for years, and successfully. I've done a ton of work in Sunderland as special counsel, and now we're Hadley, Wilbraham, Ludlow, South Hadley as well. We're as committed to these towns as any other town. I also have strong roots out here. I'm a UMass grad. I lived in Northampton for years, so my partner Lisa also went to UMass. We love this part of the state. I don't think you're going to see any falloff between what we do here and what we do on the Cape, or what we do on the North Shore, or the South Shore. It's going to be seamless, and we take every town. We have some very, very small towns. We represent Alfred. They're going to, they get as much service as, as you're going to get when they need it. And we're equipped for that. We have enough people to do it. Are the way we establish the relationships and the hierarchies in the firm. We're set up for it. So I understand the concern. I appreciate the concern, and I think we'll satisfy anyone's concerns in that regard.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming. It's nice to meet you. And of course, the traditional gatekeeper of any contact from the town with your agents, with your firm is through the town manager. So you won't be getting individual calls from us or from different boards or committees. It will all sort of channel through. That's still the same policy?
Absolutely.
Yeah. We don't want to get too relaxed, but some things haven't changed, but...
Yeah, and that's pretty typical, and we had a great department heads meeting where everyone kind of understood the drill. You know, that said, once little relationships have started on particular matters, we're going to be as responsive as we can. Lynn is, she's probably going to rue the day, but she's going to get copied on every single email we ever send to the town, so she'll be able to report to you if we don't report to you directly, what we're, what we're up to.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming, and I'm sure we'll see you again soon.
Yeah, and I'm going to stick around a little bit and see the, what happens with the rest of the agenda.
Thank you.
Well, good. There may be some sparks flying. You never know. The next part is going to be really exciting for you. It's, we have a, another guest speaker from Beta Engineering on the pavement management plan. And, you know, they submitted a pavement management plan to the Long Meadow Department of Public Works, and we have, I welcome a representative from Beta Engineering, who's going to present their findings. And we have someone on Zoom, I believe?
Yes.
Jay, you may learn more about pavement than you really need to, than you need to know.
Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Are you Peter Daria?
My name is Peter Daria. Sorry, the video's not working. But I've been, I have a presentation to share.
Well, then you'll have to get...
Just going to go over the pavement management program. Me, it's for the city, it's for the town. We did the pavement management inspections in the fall of last year, and we put together the final report for the town this past summer. So I'm just going to share my screen, if you don't mind, and then I'll get to it.
Ah, there we go. Good to see you.
Thank you. Can you see my screen?
Not yet.
Not yet. I think you should be able to do it now.
Well, you see you. That's progress.
Probably one sec.
There we go. Screen looks good. You're going to do a full page?
Everyone see the presentation?
Yeah.
That's good.
Good?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, thank you. Again, so my name is Peter Daria, Senior Project Manager at Beta Group. So again, we, last, as I mentioned, last fall, we had done a pavement management inventory assessment of all the roads in town, all the town-maintained roads. And so what I'm going to do tonight is just kind of talk about the benefits of having a pavement management program, talking to kind of the summary findings, you know, of that, of that study, and the next steps involved in the process. So overall, pavement programs, so why implement a pavement management program? First and foremost, it protects a community's investment by maximizing lifespan of the road network. It provides the ability to plan ahead and put in budgetary needs. So we want to minimize costs while maximizing the value. Very important to apply the appropriate treatment at the correct location and time. And really, this, the program as a whole, it provides the foundation to assist in decision-making moving forward of your capital planning efforts. Certainly, we want to be proactive versus being reactive. So program goals and objectives. First and foremost, was to actually conduct that, conduct that pavement condition assessment itself. By conducting the pavement condition assessment, you know, we establish, you know, our baseline of giving an understanding of what town standards currently with its road network. Again, understanding our road conditions and defining our needs. We want to evaluate pavement, also repair strategies, improvements, and the benefits of those. Establish our estimated backlog of improvements. And really, all these, these goals and objectives, you know, they really help drive, you know, developing a higher, higher high capital improvement at the end of the day. So you have the data, you collect the data, you have the data, then analyze it, and use that data moving forward to help, you know, develop your planning moving forward. So the program as a whole, we see as a five-step approach. So step one really is just the setup of the system and the GIS mapping. So in addition to doing, you know, just a tabular-based pavement management plan, we utilize Esri GIS to assist in that process. So it allows the end user to use the data and analyze it, and geospatial by our, in addition to having kind of your tabular and hard copy reports at the end of the day. So step two then is to actually do the fitnessful pavement inspections themselves. And then step three is to analyze that data as it comes in, and we use that to generate our reporting, our mapping, tables, and also our ArcGIS line dashboard, which I'll demonstrate, show a screenshot later in the presentation. Step four then, you know, once we have the data in-house, we generate our deliverables. It's then to assist, you know, use that data to help with your planning and prioritization. And then finally, step five is to kind of deploy our ArcGIS line system to the community, provide training, and really, you know, to maintain the system, you know, year to year moving forward. So the pavement inspections themselves, we use an automated approach to collect the data. So we use LiDAR technology. And as you can see in the photo on the left, on top of the video here, is a LiDAR scanner. And what that scanner does is it detects cracking, potholes, depressions, roughness, durability, drainage issues in the road. And what that in turn does is algorithms in the backend of the program, they generate a zero to 100 road surface rating, which we call RSR. Zero being the worst, 100 being essentially a brand-new road. The scores are, generally, we do our inspections at intersection, intersection road segment levels. So you get, you know, your kind of intersection, intersection level data, and then we also do composite level data scores, too, for, at the entire road level as well. As part of the LiDAR scan, high-resolution photographs are also collected as part of, as part of the, the process in the inspections, and that, those photographs are available in our ArcGIS line platform, again, which I'll demonstrate a screenshot later in the presentation. So overall, for the town of Long Meadow, we were, you know, we were responsible for inspecting just the town-accepted maintained roads. So that total is 92.56 miles of road that we inspected. I should note that those are paved roads that were inspected. The town also has roughly 1 mile of rattle road as well. The private state and town unaccepted roads were not included as part of this assessment. So once the data is collected, we worked with Sean Van Duzen and DPW staff to kind of establish how we group the data. And so we, we came to the conclusion to group it into four kind of high-level repair bands, as we call them. So band number one would be your deferred maintenance band. So roads that scored an RSR of 92/100, we're classifying those as roads in excellent condition. Generally, those are roads that... those as roads in excellent condition. Generally, those are roads that were, that were, let's say paved or improved in the last, say, three to five years. You know, pavement is in, is in excellent condition, really, really no maintenance required at this time in the road's life cycle. However, we do mention, you know, you should monitor those roads, you know, annually. Certainly, you know, if there's, if you have a harsh winter, you know, you might have some cracks to develop, you know, come next springtime. So they could then slip down to the next band. So band two would be routine maintenance band. 882 would be the category, RSR range for this category. So in general, these are roads that are, you know, very good condition, most likely roads that are kind of in that, you know, I'll say, five to eight, maybe 10-year range. You know, maybe some minor cracking starting to form. The road might be beginning to oxidize, so it might be starting to lose that, you know, jet black look, maybe starting to get more of that lighter gray look, which makes it more susceptible to cracking. So overall, roads are in good condition. Some, some repair method examples for roads in this category would be cracked ceiling, or fog ceiling, or rejuvenators out there. Category three would be your preventative maintenance band. So this is essentially roads in fair condition. Pavement surface, you know, you're probably going to see decent crack at this point in the road's life cycle, maybe some small potholes starting to develop. So overall, the roads are in fair condition, and repair methods for roads that categories in the 65 to 80 band would be sort of your thin overlays, chip seals, micro-surfacing, those are some examples. Really, it's before you're getting into, you know, kind of the rehabilitation band, where you improve some milling of the road, which is our fourth category, rehabilitation. Really, it's RSR, 065, roads in poor condition, certainly, you know, you're going to see sense of cracking, it's rutting in the road could be a possibility, probably formation of potholes, patching, you know, rough rideability. So milling, milling, paved, you know, it's common. Repair treatment that's utilized in the town already. Roads that matter kind of, you know, maybe below 30 or so, you know, they may be candidates for full-depth reclamation or, or a full rebuild of the road itself. So I just wanted to drop a couple of photos in the practice, just to give, you know, give you an idea of what, you know, what you can see and how that translates to the score. So first example, pretty clear, brand new road, Woodland Road, RSR score of 100. The second example here, made fair drive, you know, again, road here, it's generally in good condition. It is starting to oxidize a little bit, something with that jet black in it, you know, certainly, maybe some linear cracks forming in the road, maybe a little bit of sloping issues or, or roughness as well. But overall, the road's in good condition. Third example here, Longfellow Drive, RSR 740. You can see the patches here in the road. Again, this is a road in fair condition. And then below that, Burbank Road, RSR 67, you can see some, some patching. This road already partly, usually been cracked sealed, or those cracks still exist in the road. You can see formation of more cracks starting to form, and this road's starting to get close to that, you know, rehabilitation part of the road's life cycle. And then finally, Blueberry Hill Road here, RSR 51. You know, lots of alligator, a lot of cracking patches in the road, a lot of, a lot of depressions. So this would be a rehab candidate, and then same with little circle below. A lot of roughness in the road, cracking, patching, depressions, which leads to the lower RSR score. So looking at the town as a whole, overall, the network rating came in at a 69.19, and that is a weighted average. So we do a weighted average based on length and width of the roads, and really, it's based on square yards. So longer, wider roads will carry more weight than a small, narrow cul-de-sac. So really, we're looking at, you know, the actual surface area of the pavement itself in this category. So you see the four bands. Next to that, we have our average unit cost. So on the no maintenance, the routine, and the preventative maintenance, again, no maintenance is $0, averaging the cost as it's, you know, no work part at this time. The $1 for the routine maintenance and the $9.50 for the preventative maintenance, these are conservative average, new England averages we see across, across Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island, New Hampshire, for treatments that kind of fall into this price. So we like to run very conservative playing level for our estimate cost. On the rehabilitation, what we did was we did tack on extra 50% onto those type of improvements for estimates. And that allows, you know, if certain roads, you know, need additional improvements such as curbing, possibly sidewalks, we tried to bake in a little bit of, you know, a fluff into our, our unit cost to help account for possibly additional improvements that occur outside of the perfect curve improvement you have the pavement along. So you can see here the rehabilitation, that's our top to bottom. Roughly half the network fell into the rehab category, so about 40, 45.7 miles, just about 49%. So when using that estimate of $30 per unit, square yard, unit cost, rough average, essentially to take all those roads and bring them to 100, would be just under 21 million. Now, when you go to preventative maintenance band, roughly, you know, we're using $9.50 here. These are your roads in fair condition. About 21 miles of whole network made up this band. So it's about roughly 22.5% of the network. And again, much lower cost here, about 3 million, 3, $3.2 million to take these roads and essentially raise them to, you know, close to 100. Routine maintenance would be a dollar per yard, again, cracked ceiling, type of improvements. Roughly 18.9 miles of the network, so just over 20% fell into that category, with roughly $300,000 estimated cost for improvement. And then finally, no maintenance required, about seven miles of the network, roughly 7.5% for that band. Overall, on the bottom, you can see, kind of, the rough estimate to kind of get the whole network to 100, you know, which that would be roughly 24, which certainly isn't feasible, but, you know, it's a good understanding to see where you sit. And when, as we move to the capital planning portion of the program, you know, you can forecast out how you can slowly improve that network rate, network rate in the future. So just to kind of tie into the data in tabular format, as I've mentioned earlier, we work in an Esri GIS environment. In addition to having the data in that tabular format, we prepare maps in GIS software that can be utilized by the town. So as you see here, the dark blue represents the road in the no maintenance required category, light blue, routine maintenance category, the green would be your preventative maintenance category, and finally, the orange would be the rehabilitation category. This is a quick screenshot of the ArcGIS line platform that we deployed to the community. So in the middle, it is the actual roads and line files themselves. And this allows the end user the ability to go in, do selection sets, queries, filters on the data itself. That allows, that allows for estimated costs and projections to be calculated. Around the outside, again, of the, of the interface itself, we have these widgets. They're interactive to the map. So as you zoom in and select on road segments, and make selection sets, the widgets around the outside of the map will update as well. And just wanted to point out on the right side here, we've been tracking the road paving history by year. So the town's provided the last five years of paving improvements. So we blow that into dashboard. And so the idea with that is moving forward, we want to track the paving history each year. So you have a historical record, you know, not just in tabular format, but also in GIS environment as well. And just to kind of touch basically on the LiDAR, all those white dots, as you zoom in in the interface, these white dots will appear, and those represent your photographs that were captured. So it's roughly, it's roughly every 20 feet, you have a photograph that's captured. You can, you can open it within the ArcGIS line interface, just to give you a little more context as to how, you know, what was seen at that time inspection. So in addition to doing the pavement management road inspections, as part of this question, we also inspected 17 town-maintained facilities. So this did include, you know, this included the schools in the community, the police department, fire department, town hall, along with all the other communities, both town-maintained facilities. So the difference between this inspection and the, and the roadways was that this was a manual inspection. The LiDARs is only able to capture the roads. It's not able to do parking lots this time. So Beta's the field inspector, 10 years' experience, came out and did a manual assessment on the parking lots. Same scale as the, the roads. The main difference would be that the inspector manually physically populates the, the stresses by their severity and extent, and that in turn generates a zero-point score. So as part of this exercise, in addition to calculating the RSR scores of the parking lots, Beta also located additional assets within each of the parking lots, such as signs, catch basins, manholes, light poles, and also the number of parking lot spaces. So all that data was, was tied into the GIS. So just a quick summary on the parking lots. Roughly 22% of the network fell into the deferred maintenance category, approximately 30% in the routine maintenance category, about 9% in the preventative maintenance category, and about 38% fell into the rehabilitation category. So I just listed all the parking lots here quickly. As you can see, they kind of range out of the RSR from, you know, from 99 all the way down to 38. So for the parking lots, the ad average came in at about 72.76, with roughly an estimate of, you know, 1.86. Really, to kind of get everything, you know, if you were looking to get everything to 100, that would be the rough backlog number, so. Excuse me. So next steps in the process, so, and we're here today presenting the findings, you know, of, of the, you know, the image for the assessment. So next step really is to define your needs, which ultimately leads to development of that multi-year capital improvement. So when developing a capital plan, it's really, you know, you see, it's more, it's more than just analyzing the condition of the road itself. Other things you want to consider when doing plans together would be road functional class. So your arterials and collectors, you know, versus your local roads and your cul-de-sacs. That all gets factored into a cost-benefit value analysis. That also considers, you know, how much repair costs are versus life improvement. Certain treatments will yield more life, years of life than, than others. So, you know, even though crack sealing is a very cost-effective treatment, you know, it's very, it's very, it's very cheap to know that, you know, it does only yield a few years of life improvement to the road. Subsurface utilities are also something to consider. If you know that you're going to be improving the gas or water or sewer line, you know, in the next few years, it certainly makes sense to hold off on improving that road's, you know, pavement surface until those utilities are, have been updated, upgraded. And at that time, then it would make sense to, you know, possibly re-circuits the road. Sidewalks and curbs are another consideration. You know, if, if you're going to improve the roads, it makes sense to do the sidewalks and the curbs at the same time. And finally, geographic location and proximity. We like to promote grouping projects together. If you're going into a neighborhood to improve one road, does it make sense to improve the rest of the roads? Usually, it does. That helps cut down motivation fees of construction groups. And also proximity of the town itself. You know, we promote, you know, improving pride, you know, grouping projects across town itself, you know, instead of, not just in one certain location in town. You want to promote, you know, promoting infrastructure improvements across the balance, over, over most years. So here, what we have is a quick five-year forecast model. So what this does is it takes your current RSR from the 69.19. And what we're doing here is projecting how that RSR would likely trend over the next five years based on, you know, kind of a general budget allotment. I will mention, it's a very conservative model. You know, we, we don't know how prices are certainly going to, going to fluctuate from year to year. Certainly, the last two years, we've seen a certain spike, you know, in the price of asphalt, in the price of labor, in the price of materials, and the price of gas. And that's certainly made it more expensive, you know, to, to keep up with our roads, and our infrastructure in general. So what we've done here is, is we've come up with five scenarios. So if you look at the bottom scenario here, $477,000. That's the town's current chapter nine funding. So if the town were to, say, set aside just that amount to do paving improvements over the next five years, it's likely the RSR would, would decrease roughly three points in the next five years. At $1 million per year, it's likely the RSR would drop, you know, maybe somewhere between a point and a half for the next five years. So really, the $1.4 million mark, you know, with the prices we're using in the program, that would be our recommendation to at least keep that current RSR status twelve. Anything north of that, it's likely the town would see, you know, a bump in rating. Just one thing I want to reiterate, and, you know, again, the rehabilitation, it does have 50% contingency tacked on to it for, you know, additional improvements such as curbing and sidewalks. So if you're looking at just the pavement itself, it might be a little less than 1.4 to kind of get that balance, to find that break-even point. So finally, and then our last step for systems deployment, maintenance and training. So, you know, we worked with the town on, on training them on how to utilize the software, how to put together capital programs, and certainly, we're here to help in that process. Very important, the town's made the investment in this program, so it really makes sense to update the data as improvements are, be it year to year. Generally, we recommend updating the program at the end of the construction season. And that helps, you know, what, what is, what is the network, RSR at that time, you know, are we gaining ground? Are we losing ground? Are we maintaining? If we are losing ground, what can we do differently? Next year, hopefully, we get a gain, you know, non-roads RSR. We want to monitor and update the actual costs annually. And this is very important , certainly, we've seen inflation lately, and the prices can really fluctuate year to year. So we want to review those annually so that, you know, the estimated costs we're running in the program are accurate at that point in time. And then finally, we recommend reassessing your road network every three to four years. You know, the program will predict roadway deterioration over time. But after three or four years, you know, the data starts to get a little old, the photos get old. And that's where we recommend doing, you know, a new assessment, that three or four window, year window, to get, you know, updated data set, which, which again, then helps, you know, you can monitor your, your RSR every, you know, three or four years of actual live data. So with that, I just want to thank you for having me. Thank you for, you know, letting Beta do this study for the town. I hope, hope the town finds it useful, and I'd be happy to take any questions if there's any.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation, and, you know, we can open up to questions. But I, I did have a question about, you know, specific roads that trucks are directed to in our town. Could you tell from your study which, which roads those were?
We can. We can do. What we've done for other towns is we'll do like an industrial code. We'll code certain roads, you know, that has heavy truck traffic on, as industrial. And what we can do in the program is we can do like a deterior, like accelerated deteriorating waiting on those, on those roads themselves. So we can really advance the deterioration of the roads.
Okay. So the, the data didn't, it didn't jump off from the data like, gee, these main roads here are really beat up from trucks. You didn't see that?
Not, not necessarily. I mean, it really, you know, we really, you know, whether the roads, it's really an R, based on the RSR itself. That's kind of how we prioritize our ratings. You know, a certain one is something we can look into further if it's of interest.
Okay. And so, I, I'm glad to see that Sean Van Dusen's here, because I, I guess you, you look at, you know, the price range you gave us, gave us from 2 million to like 400 something K. And so Sean, what, what's our current budget per year now been looking like?
I think it's just over a million.
Over a million. Okay. Thank you.
Look, I'm throwing it off in my head. I think it's just over a million.
That's a combination of our capital plan and our chapter, chapter 90 funding.
Okay, great. All right, thanks. Now, do all the folks have questions? Yes, Mark?
Peter, thank you for the presentation. I guess, my first question is, does your model or system presume linear degradation of, of roads? Because what I've seen in my years in town is, you know, some winter, the plow will be going down some street, go over a bump, and dump a bunch of salt, and all of a sudden, that road goes to hell in, in, in the next, you know, 90 days or in the next year. And all of a sudden, what you thought was doing well isn't. So how linear is this projection that, that you have, or downwards trend of these things?
Yeah, good question. So what we do is we project based on functional class. So we degrade our arterials and our collectors at a higher rate than we would our locals and our cul-de-sacs. In that high level, you know, you know, the model I showed, you know, where the 400,000, you know, the chapter 90 spending went down, we do, we do, there is 3% inflation that's going through that model. Certainly, as I mentioned, you know, we don't know where our pricing's going to be. Certainly, as I mentioned, we don't know where our pricing is going to be in the next, certainly, you know, in the next year to year. We don't know where it's going to be pricing, and hopefully it'll stabilize. But I do, we do run a really conservative model. Just kind of, it's not a worst case, but we just try to predict, we're trying to project how paving has deteriorated over time versus where we think pricing might go in the next three or five years. So that's how we kind of determine it. Again, that's why I would say we do kind of recommend updating that updated snapshot every, let's say, four years is probably a good timeframe. So that way, then we can really do like a case-by-case study, apples to apples, to see how much each road really has deteriorated over a four or five year span.
I guess my follow-up question to Sean is, how do we use this when we've got 45% of our roads that are, if I do an excellent, good, fair, poor, they're in the poor range? You know, and frankly, a million dollars is pushing it for what we spend right now to come up with more money. It's not going to happen. So how do you manage based on this information? Frankly, is this just good information to have? But it all does is, you know, gives us some real bad vibes here? Knowledge of what we already, you know, technology on what we already knew?
So I mean, we'll be creative. I think it's going to be a combination of grants and also getting a similar report on the water and sewer, which we'll have next month. We're going to have to be doing water and sewer projects in front of these paving projects and probably utilizing some of the enterprise funds to cover portions of the paving because they will be multifaceted projects. So I think it's going to be a combination of things. But, you know, I think just getting this information out there right now is really what I'm here for. And I think maybe with the finance director, working with you guys will come up with a plan. But at the end of the day, it's going to be a decision that you guys are going to have to make in terms of what the priorities are and what direction you want to go with.
Any other?
Can I just make a comment? And the $478,000 we get in chapter 90, you know, I recall 15 years ago, it was $460,000. So it's, you know, it hasn't gone up much, but the amount of miles you get out of $460,000 is probably half of what it was 15 years ago. So what we really need to do is translate that into miles we need, not just dollars we need.
Right. Well, the governor signed some money, chapter 90.
It's the same amount.
It's for us, for us, same, yeah.
Yeah, it didn't go. That's why the Mass Municipal Association's big on trying to push for more money for chapter 90. But I know that didn't happen this year, and I don't think it's going to happen.
Well, no, for towns under $10,000, there was some more cut, but we don't make the cutoff. We're too dense. And so, all right, Josh, or by Dan.
Thank you. Sean, just a quick question. So I think it was probably a few months ago, I think you sent us a list of streets that were going to be paved potentially. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm just curious how this assessment compares to what you had sent us a few months ago. Are you seeing some similar trends, or do we have to change the roads?
So we're not going to change the current plan. But what we're going to do is utilize this plan along with the water and sewer plan, which are going to have a similar, there's a similar RGIS database. And we're going to look at those plans to see where the water and sewer needs are to make sure we're not paving over roads that we're going to have to rip up and do water and sewer in a couple of years. And then these two plans will merge together, and hopefully we'll have that ready for next spring, you know, for this fall's budget process. But we're not altering the plan that we currently have. Those roads don't have to bid. We did have a lot of this information prior, though, when we came up with that existing capital plan. So we're going to apply it by any means. I do want to also, on the chapter 90 subject, mention that as part of this project, Beta found that we were not being reimbursed for almost five miles of roads in the state. So when we get those added into our miles, we should get above $10,000 roughly every year in chapter 90. So that's one good thing that came out of this.
Okay. Sounds good. And yeah, I mean, we can have the best plans, but if we aren't paying attention to water and sewer problems and towards roads, they're going to get tore up. And pending projects is sort of a waste of money because we finish it and then they dig it up. You know, we do have a moratorium on tearing up roads that we've paved, but when it's a water main break, then that has priority, right, Sean?
Yes, exactly. You have water and sewer breaks and stuff, that stuff definitely factors in. We're monitoring roads all the time, so if there's changes and a gas main project comes along, that will alter the placement of the road on this plan. This will be updated constantly. But I do think it's important that this got done so that we have the institutional knowledge that of some of the people that have worked at DPW a long time, locked into this program and locked into this with Beta, and that it exists sort of, you know, in perpetuity. It can continue to be worked on. So we can monitor this stuff closely and understand what's happening.
Great. Yes, Mark.
Sean, how much did this study cost us, and how did we pay for it?
I think this was around $20,000, if I recall correctly. I think a portion of it was chapter 90. I think another portion might have been the engineering funds that we had gotten. I have to look tomorrow. But as I stated, the increase, the $10,000 we got in the increase of chapter 90 will cover this in two years.
Thanks.
Good answer. Good answer, Sean. Any other questions? Lynn, did you have any comments about this plan?
I think what's different to me with this one that stands out is we also covered parking lots. And that's not something we've historically taken a close look at. And I think you can see what happens when you don't. I mean, Greenwood alone, the old Greenwood Center, that lot is in rough shape. And so I think that's important to capture in these numbers is that we also not only have the roads to maintain, but we have public parking lots that we're required to keep in good form.
Yeah, that's true. Like the Behind Town Hall. I mean, that's pretty rough shape sometimes. So, all right, if there's no other questions, we thank you for joining us tonight from Beta Engineering and very informative presentation. Thank you very much, Peter.
Yeah, thank you, Robby. I appreciate it.
All right. And next, we go to select board comments. Yes, Josh.
The middle school building committee met last week. And after, and first, I just want to make sure that the subcommittee was thanked who helped pick the project manager, Armin Ray, David McGreen, Chris Rosenbloom, and Chris Lajadre. They worked really hard over the last week of the summer, interviewed, when was it, four?
Yes, four.
Four, well, they picked from six applicants to be the middle school building project manager. They went through a process, narrowed it down to four, interviewed four companies, and they picked Colliers and recommended Colliers to the whole middle school building committee. And that's who was selected. And Chad was negotiating with them, and I think they're going to do a great job. So I just wanted to thank that subcommittee. And in case anyone is wondering what's happening now, the town actually couldn't sign that agreement with the project manager and now goes to the Mass School Building Authority to approve. And then it gets signed, and then it'll be off to the races. But Colliers, they actually have an office in Agawam. They, I think the, one of the people who will be a great contact lives across the street from Williams, so is really aware of what's going on here. And they hit the ground running. They had already done some work on, they looked at the deficiencies before we even got into this process. So they're well on their way to helping us out. So that's just the update from the MSBC. Any other select board comments?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Something we talked about doing a few months ago that we have not done yet is have a conversation about our budget priorities for the year. You know, just even listening to this presentation kind of highlights the need for us to do that. I think it will help us give focus to our work and also give direction to our staff. And so, you know, I think summer's kind of, you know, almost past us. And I think sooner rather than later, we need to put that on our agenda, and we need to have a conversation about that.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. It's been almost about a month since I think we last met, so pretty busy. I wanted to mention I did attend the Cooley Brook hydraulic study. Tom, you were there, I think, Mark as well. I think some others also listened to it remotely. Just, and I did want to compliment Corinne as well on getting, not to steal your thunder, Lynn here, but getting another grant for the MVP for Phase Two, which is really exciting to be a part of that. And then also the regional select board meeting as well. I know a bunch of us attended that. You know, it's just evident today when we see all the volunteers coming here in front of us. Some of the other towns had mentioned, they're actually looking to Long Meadow saying, how do we get volunteers to step up for boards? So it's just really a testament to the community in Long Meadow and the residents for, I don't want to say we have a shortage sometimes, but we have a lot of active people in town that want to get involved. So I thought that was a good takeaway from that meeting. Also, I did want to thank the Long Meadow Police for their work last week apprehending a couple of suspects in town on some of the home break-ins. I don't think this is a concern for residents. I think Lynn, you mentioned some of the crime stats at the regional select board meeting, which compared to some of the other towns, Long Meadow is relatively low. And I just think people need to stay vigilant and look out for each other. But I did want to applaud our police officers for apprehending the suspects. And then finally, all of us attended the volunteer luncheon at the senior center, and it was a really good turnout and just some really good stories. And I just really enjoyed attending that event. I thought it was nice to see all the people that help out and volunteer. So, thank you.
Okay. And yeah, I have some comments tonight. At the adult center, at the volunteer luncheon, recognition luncheon, I found out that Marge Morgan had passed away, who was a social worker in town, was involved in the adult center and a number of different committees. And I really am going to feel her passing because she was the one person who would send me emails in support when I would sort of object to the fact that drinking was becoming too important in our town. As you know, we've had celebrations in the town, you know, Long Meadow Days and so forth, for 35-plus years without alcohol. And we've just started to allow alcohol at those functions. And, you know, it's hard to measure the true cost of having alcohol invade that part of our town. And, you know, in the political world, you look at whatever you subsidize, you get more of. All right. And right now, the town is subsidizing the folks who are selling the alcohol because we give them a location and a crowd. And so we're going to get more of it. And I don't know if that's the best thing for our town. And I think we need to make some adjustments. There are municipalities that keep track of exactly how much alcohol is sold and get funds, you know, from the supplier of the alcohol. They get a percentage. And, you know, we'll have a chance to talk about that perhaps later as a select board and definitely in an executive session because it's in the negotiation. But it's an important thing that we keep tabs of. We're new at this, and I don't think we should just give a blanket approval to anyone who has an event, you know, it's going to be Long Meadow Days, and there's going to be Pride Fest, and there's going to be Winter Fest, and there's going to be Winter Fest, and then Spring Fest. And the town, you know, gets a $50 fee. And I just, I don't think that that's the right plan for us as a town. And we need to come up with a better strategy because we are subsidizing drinking in our town, right in the center of town. And if there are problems that erupt, it falls on the shoulders of our police and fire department. And so, you know, we'll talk more about it. But we have an approval coming up tonight, and I don't feel that good about it, to be honest. All right, Mark Gold.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment about one of the letters we got. It was actually from the Energy and Sustainability Committee making a recommendation about a Warren article. And I want to just make sure that that doesn't get lost in the shuffle. Not something I want to discuss now, but I hope that the process that we set up, which was have these outside committees be advisory to the select board, and also a process that said they could make recommendations. And if we adopted it, we could bring things through to the town warrant that we follow up on those. I have to think this one's a good one, but, you know, the point is, I think we need to make sure that that makes it through to see if the select board wants to endorse what that committee particularly, but committees in general, recommend to us.
Okay. Thank you. And no other comments, we'll move on to our town manager's report.
Thank you. It's a long one tonight. So I've got some really great news in a lot of these projects that we've been working on. One, the first up is the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. This was an opportunity that I read about in the Mass Municipal Association newsletter recently. And I followed up with the Valley Opportunity Council, who is the primary point on this project. It provides eligible households assistance in paying water and sewer bills to restore or maintain access to drinking water and wastewater services and is funded through two federal appropriations. It's administered by the Commonwealth Department of Housing and Community Development. Locally, we have, there's 20 local administering agencies. They're the same agencies that administer the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. That's the fuel assistance program. So it's Valley Opportunity Council out of Holyoke that would service Long Meadow. And they pay past due balances on water and wastewater services to help reduce customers' rates in the federal fiscal year. So by the time I heard about this program and when the program closes on September 30th, we had a really short window. But I'm pleased to say that working with Valley Opportunity Council and Lisa specifically at the DPW, they were able to turn this around very quickly. We have 95 residents who could potentially benefit from this assistance. Eligibility is determined by the Valley Opportunity Council and their criteria, not by the town. DPW, working with Valley Opportunity Council, has already received $17,820 and has been able to apply this toward, or has been able to apply $200 to each qualifying resident. So that has been a really great success there. Over the last couple of select board meetings, there's been public comment and select board comment about water quality and water infrastructure work. So I thought it would be a good opportunity to give you an update on a lot of the projects we have in these two areas. And as Sean mentioned in the pavement management plan, at a future meeting, I believe sometime in October, you'll have a presentation from those consulting firms that are working on a lot of these reports for us. So the first up is tie-in bond. They're going to come and present to you some point later this fall about the various plans that are under development related to improvements in these areas, one of which is the water pipe replacement study and accompanying utility rate study that's estimating the cost of water main replacement throughout the town. The report recognizes that replacement needs to be done likely over a 20- to 30-year timeline due to the overall cost. Study's going to develop a prioritization plan and make recommendations. Accompanying that is the rate study that would model for you how associated water rates would need to fund those replacements. Tie-in bond's also reviewing and recommending draft updates to the rules and regulations governing the town of Long Meadow Public Water Supply System. And they're going to prepare draft sewer use regulation for review by town council and then ultimately review by the select board. Tie-in bond is also preparing a water storage tank analysis, which looks at three options for the water storage tank, including replacement of the existing tank with a larger tank or constructing a redundant water storage tank on the same parcel as the existing one. As a reminder, this was a result of the summer of 2022 when we faced daily water supply concerns due to drought conditions and the demand on the water system. The tank could not fill fast enough to keep up with demand, causing concern among staff on whether we'd be able to have adequate flow and supply to handle a fire emergency. on whether we'd be able to have adequate flow and supply to handle a fire emergency. The DPW has two other water design projects close to finishing up, ones for a generator at the Forest Glen Pump Station and the water line replacement project associated with Conver Street L Project. There's a water line replacement project for Cooley and Emerson Road currently out to bid with construction likely in spring of 2024. And lastly, the notices residents receive when quarterly water testing levels are below mass DEP required amounts naturally trigger concern. Some of what is mentioned in, that I just mentioned above will improve water quality, but the major improvements will come with the upgrades at the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission facility. I did link an update to those projects that Springfield Water and Sewer have underway in my report here, and you can see that online. The most recent round of quarterly testing that the town had to conduct showed that the levels were satisfactory, thus not requiring a notice to users. The information will be posted on the town website regarding this, along with an, along with information explaining that disinfection byproduct levels can fluctuate significantly throughout the year. During the wet summer, conditions in Cobble Mountain Reservoir, the commission's main drinking water supply, remain favorable to low disinfection byproduct formation. Changes in precipitation or seasonal patterns can influence future disinfection byproduct levels, and thus future violations are possible. The commission's nineteen-seventy plant was not designed with the filtration capability necessary to meet today's disinfection byproduct standards, which were last updated in 2012. The commission will continue to optimize its drinking water treatment plant to reduce disinfection byproduct formation to the maximum extent feasible. In the addition, in addition, the town of Long Meadow is going to continue to optimize flushing and other mitigation solutions in its distribution system with the same goal. As a permanent solution, the commission is currently nearing ninety percent design completion on a new drinking water treatment plant. The new West Parish Water Treatment Plant will incorporate new treatment technology to resolve the issues with disinfection byproducts. Construction on that is scheduled to begin in 2024 and expected to be completed in mid-2028. I'll skip over the update on the middle school building committee because Josh just gave that. An update on Bliss and Greenwood pools. So I, as I had reported in early August, AE Comm had completed its design work for Bliss and Greenwood. We now have cost estimates for both, for repairs at both pools. The work needed at Bliss is estimated at eight hundred and seventy thousand and includes new electrical panels in the filter room, new pump drainage connection, replacement of the pool pump, in addition of a second pool pump as backup, cleaning and refurbishment of the sand filters, and new ADA improvements. The work estimated at Greenwood is two hundred and twenty thousand and includes a new pool drainage connection, mechanical and electrical work, replacement of the pool pump, and adding a second to match the same approach at Bliss, cleaning and refurbishment of the sand filters. Both estimates have conservative contingency amounts built in, so we're not faced with insufficient funds once we go out to bid. Much of this work can be completed this upcoming fall and over the winter and spring if funding is approved at the special fall town meeting. The Safe Roots to School project on Blueberry Hill Road has been delayed. This is one that we've received a considerable amount of inquiry about, so I did want to make sure that this got out here this week. The notice to proceed on this project was issued at the end of July with the understanding that the project would be completed before the start of the school year, that town staff were adamant that the disruption that this would cause by continuing into the school year would be one that we would all be fielding complaints about. And I think that has borne out. So this is a mass DOT project that the town applied for in FY20. The DOT specs called for a six-foot-wide green-pigmented concrete sidewalk on Blueberry Hill Road adjacent to the existing sidewalk. The new green sidewalk will be for bicyclists, and it's essentially a shared-use path. The construction delays were related to the contractor being unable to provide a green concrete that matched the spec exactly. Therefore, an alternative green pigment was proposed. Mass DOT required that the concrete plant to provide a sample of the alternate, and they decided that compressive testing of the concrete was necessary. The seven-day test allows for concrete to cure for that period of time and then measure its compressive strength. The seven-day breaks went well, which means that it passed the strength test. When the mix is ready, the contractor will be working on Blueberry Hill Road within the restricted hours of nine AM to two PM so as not to interfere with school drop-off and pickup. Mailing for the crosswalks is scheduled for Thursday, September eighth, and then any structures that need to be adjusted will be adjusted, and paving will take place the following week. We do not have a scheduled date for line striping as of, as of the time I prepared this report. The rectangular rapid flashing beacon will not be completed by the end of the project date of September nineteenth. There is a delay in shipping, and so we will likely not have that functioning until October. We recently had a ruling on the attorney, from the Attorney General's Office on the warrant articles from the May town meeting. All of them had been approved except for Article twenty-two, which we had a defect in the posting notice. It was purely administrative. We missed the posting deadline by a day with the town clerk's office. This is something unfortunately we are familiar with, as we had this happen the last time. And we're already working to cure that. Town council has weighed in on this with us. The Attorney General's Office has provided guidance, and notices have already been posted in the paper. So this will be in effect relatively soon. The drainage issue at the Adult Center has been remedied. After exposing the existing drainage, it was determined that some of the connections had either not been completely fashioned or had become dislodged after settling. Either way, the issue's been fixed, and after monitoring the drainage over the last few rain events, it appears to have resolved the problem. We're going to continue to monitor this and perform some additional stormwater drainage work near the gym entrance in the future. An update from the fire department that was likely in the July, pieces of this are probably in the July report. Oh, no, we're a month behind, right? So it'll be next, next July fire report, or next February fire report. So with the promotion of Captain Ringney to Deputy Chief, there was a vacancy in the captain position, which then cascaded down. I'm pleased to inform you that the two new promotions that became effective on August twentieth were Lieutenant Carl Viera, who has most recently served as our Fire Prevention Officer. For the last four years, was promoted to captain. He's going to serve as shift commander for A Shift. Firefighter Dennis Gardner, who served as our ALS Coordinator, has been promoted to lieutenant to also be assigned to A Shift and is the second-in-command and training officer. In other fire department news, the fire department had its annual Mass DPH OEMS inspection in August. It's a comprehensive inspection of the ambulance service. Normally, these inspections find some areas for improvement. In the inspection that took place, the department scored perfectly with no suggested improvements. Besides Chief Dearborn, Carl Viera, besides Chief Dearborn, Carl Viera and Dennis Gardner are instrumental in keeping this aspect of the service running efficiently, and they deserve the bulk of the credit. However, the entire department did help prepare for the inspection and showed these outstanding results. As briefly mentioned in select board comments, we were awarded our second MVP Grant Award. And this is our, our second one for, to further the work at Cooley Brook. And this is the amount, in the amount of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars for Cooley Brook watershed improvements. Calling this Phase Two, it's going to further work over FY24 and '25, work that had been started through prior CPA grants. This is for additional hydraulic and hydrology modeling for unstudied parts of the watershed on private residential properties. Citizen science water quality sampling led by the Connecticut River Conservancy. Based on those conditions above, they'll provide alternate analysis for stream bank restoration and green infrastructure interventions within the watershed. It'll also provide a sixty percent permit level design and pre-permitting meetings for the chosen alternatives, and citizen science in Long Meadow Public Schools for fourth graders. This will teach liminology in Laurel Pond and assessing habitat value based on existing conditions. Phase Two work's going to carry forward the work that started in Phase One, funded by CPA, to conduct that hydraulic and hydrology study of Cooley Brook. Again, this was the second MVP Grant Award Long Meadow's received. The first was funding the long-range plan update, the DEI work, and the age-friendly designation. And that grant was in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, five fifty-five. And I need to give a strong kudos to the Assistant Town Manager, Corinne Meisibuns, for her work putting this grant application together. Since Corinne's been here, we've, she's applied for two MVP grants. We've gotten both MVP grants, and they total over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's pretty phenomenal. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
This sounds good. Yes.
I just want to echo on Corinne, that's great. Really, we brought her in to get grants, and she's, by God, she's done it. So that's great. I was really happy to see the, my favorite topic, the Bliss Pool comeback. You said that much of the work could be done over the off-season. Does that mean, in theory, could they both open next year, or could Bliss open next year if it's approved in the fall?
Infrastructure-wise, yes. We do believe that the work that is needed can happen then. I will strongly caution you that there is still a lifeguard shortage. And when we talk internally about planning to open both pools next year, there is a lot of concern from the Park and Rec Department that they will have adequate staffing levels.
So we might even have to like switch between the pools for staff?
That was one scenario that had been discussed when we thought we could open both pools before we learned of the drainage issues, was alternating days. I don't know if that will happen, but we're going to proceed as if we'll have staff.
Okay. And I just want one more thing on the, on the reports. I don't know, you may not have particular on this, but on the building inspector, zoning enforcement, there, as I mentioned, three hundred signs. Was that just college hunks or something? Is it that? A company putting up three hundred signs? That's outlandish, but I think that in our...
I think it's probably cumulative.
Whatever it is, he brought up a good idea to have maybe a bylaw for repeat offenders. So if college hunks puts up a hundred signs a month, we gotta, we gotta make it not worth our while to do that because that's a lot of time, and now it's going high up on the telephone poles. So if that's something that the planning board wants to look into, I think that would be worth our while because that's, we shouldn't have to deal with that. That's ridiculous.
Okay. Marco.
Yeah, just, just a quick follow-up on Josh's comment about Bliss and Greenwood Pool. I noted, I think I read through, Lynn, what you said there, that, you know, the totals are Bliss Pool upgrade, eight hundred and seventy thousand, Greenwood, two twenty. That's, that's a million-one, give or taken. And I think it might be beneficial to the town residents as we move forward with that, that we separate as the proposal what we must do to open Bliss Pool versus what it's smart for us to do because we're doing the work anyway. Because as I read through that, there are things there that we really ought to be doing. I mean, the pools haven't been touched in forty years, whatever it is. But, but there, that's a very different amount of money from, you know, we can't open this pool without a certain amount of money for repairing, you know, fixing the pumps and the drains and all that stuff. So just a, kind of my way of looking at it is separate the, what we really must do versus what we really ought to do. I think that helped people get the perspective. Hopefully, people in town will approve this. The pools are a great asset. The only other thing I want to comment on, this brought it to my mind, was your comments about the Valley Opportunity Low Income Housing Assistance for Water and Sewer Rates. I just wanted to comment to people in town, because I get a lot of emails about people about our water rates and sewer rates, that there's an article in the paper the other day about the city of Holyoke and their sewer rates. And they, it was listed as eight dollars, but the units are different. It's for a hundred gallons or something like that. We do it for a hundred cubic feet. But it still works out that that's more than twice what people charge in Long Meadow when you get down to the dollar per, per cubic feet for sewers. So, you know, the, the process by which we charge people, I think, is very effective. We do our utilities groups within the DPW, whether it's water or sewer, do a very effective job. I was reading in the paper the other day that in Texas, they've now gone to a fixed charge for, before you turn on the first drop of water out of your house, it's ninety dollars a quarter, you know? And we charge, I think it's, we just went from fifteen, sixty to like eighteen dollars a year for the, what's called the fixed rate. So we're at eighteen dollars a year, and in the state of Texas, they're at a hundred and eighty dollars a year. So when people complain about, you know, utilities, yes, they're high, but keep in mind, everything's relative.
Yes, yes. It's nice not to live in a desert. That's one thing. Lynn, a couple of things, and, you know, we look at contamination of the water, and it's a big deal. I saw this commercial on TV where they were basically taking a roof and waterproofing it, and I'm thinking, that's probably all PFAS. It's probably all the same stuff that's polluting our system because most of that waterproofing material is what's a permanent contaminant. But when you talked about the water tower, you know, and I had mentioned this before, I want to repeat it because Bill Law, a former select board member, had said that, you know, having like a sister and having something below the water tower on that property that would fill up, and then you could take water from there into the tower because building a new tower would probably be cost prohibitive for the town. But, so I'm glad that that came up as an option. And again, you know, it's a credit to Corinne that we're getting these grants in, and it's a really, it's great. Great things are going well. Yes, Vinita?
Yeah, I just wanted to also just comment on the water quality update. I think this is really important, so thank you for putting this together. I think it's going to be, you know, of great interest to people. I also think that folks are looking for guidance right now on, you know, what is safe and what is not safe, and what they should be doing, what they shouldn't be doing. You know, I think Mark brought this up when we talked about this a couple of months ago, that this might just be an education and outreach issue here. And, you know, when we're talking about folks, when we're talking about something that's, you know, as fundamental as drinking water, I think people, their minds go to the worst-case scenario. And this is something that people keep reaching out to me about, that I keep hearing about. And I think people are, you know, are confused and scared right now. And, you know, I think people, their mind jumps to, you know, is this a, you know, Flint, Michigan situation? And especially, you know, folks, you know, like the resident comment that we had, you know, if you're talking about a household with immunocompromised persons and, you know, children, you know, folks don't want to take any kind of chance. And so I don't know, you know, what exactly we can say, but I think the notices that the folk, people are getting right now are confusing, and they're, they're scaring people. And so I don't know if that means we put out something that, you know, provides guidance in, you know, clearer language. But I think this is something that we're going to keep hearing about until, you know, we, we put something out, explaining it better.
Yes?
I guess since we're on the topic, and I know I bring it up quite often about the water quality, so I can certainly appreciate Vinita's comments. And then just a comment to what Mark was talking about around the rates. I guess the complaints that I'm getting and the complaints that Vinita are getting, it's not necessarily, it's, hey, we're paying a lot for water and sewer, but the quality is not up to par. And that, that's what we're getting for complaints. I don't know what your complaints are like, what you're receiving, but people are okay with paying a few extra dollars if they're going to see the return on the investment being clean water. So with the assessment that's coming up that Lynn talked about, excuse me, I think that's where we need to focus on. If it's going to cost more money with water sewer rates, people better get a good bang for their buck in terms of quality water. And I understand it's not going to happen overnight, but we need to focus on the quality over just the dollars and cents. And that seems to be kind of the theme that comes up a lot. So I don't mean it to be disrespectful. I'm just suggesting that's kind of how I've seen things just on my short-term on this board for only over a year. So anyways, I did want to just call that out.
All right. So let's move on. We need to get our approval of the minutes for the June twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth meeting? Do you have a motion?
Tom, I'll make a motion to approve the June twenty-sixth select board meeting minutes. I did send to Mike, most of them were typos, that, you know, it said, somebody commented instead of the, planning board, it put he. So there's a bunch of typos. There was, instead of, instead of, I guess, instead of Packer, it should, or it should have been Packaged instead of Packer or Packet, instead of Packer, things like that. So subject to the typos that I sent to Mike, I move we approve the minutes of the meeting.
Second.
There we go. Second. Okay. All those in favor? There we go, second. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. And now we move on to the Poor Things Coffee Truck locations. We've all received documentation about, you know, the locations that they're seeking for approval for. And they have proposed locations of Bliss Parking Lot, Blinn Tennis Courts, Long Meadow Street, Benedict Terrace, Wolf Swamp Fields, and at the Long Meadow Community House, southeast of the Green Lot. And so is there any, where we start? Any comments on the, on their suggestions for locations? Yes?
I have a couple of comments. In general, you know, it's nice they asked for five spots. I'm not sure that I'm prepared to grant five spots. I'll go through them one by one. I think the Bliss Park Parking Lot, there's very, very limited parking in that parking lot when there's an event going on. And I think it'd be a shame to have it tied up with a vendor. You know, in terms of the Blinn Tennis Court Parking Lot, I think it's, it's fine. For me, you know, I don't know what's going to happen during major events. You know, we've got a recommendation on, it's called the Benedict Terrace Parking Lot. You know, I think within limited times and given what's going on, there's businesses there that goes, that parking, although it's town, it's a town lot for town parking, it's taking up at least one spot, maybe two spots or more that limit what those businesses can have. And I'd love to get their opinion. I think the Wolf Swamp Fields, clearly, they talked to, Pierce did talk to Barry Jarvis, that looked pretty good. But in terms of the Community House, I think one of the problems I have is, you know, if somebody said, I want the best possible prime real estate location, that's where I'd take. And I think they asked for that. Personally, I'd move them further north on that parking lot in front of the Community House because I think they've got a prime spot for people who could go in and out of the Community House to conduct business there and in a town hall. The other thing is, I think if we're going to do this, we need to limit some times and duration. Certainly, for example, the area in front of the Community House, if we approve that, does that mean we approve it during the Long Meadow Fall Festival or during Pride, the Pride Festival? Because, you know, unless we exclude those times, we're going to find out that somebody found a way to avoid the, or evade the fee that these organizations charge for a food vendor to be at their facility. And so I think we need to get very specific about, about, you know, what times and locations that we look at. So that's kind of my take on them. But in general, if we're going to go this way, I think we need to look at it. The other thing, obviously, and I'll repeat the comment I had a month ago, is, you know, we've got some businesses in town that pay significant amounts of tax money to provide, to be a coffee shop or whatever it is. And we're letting somebody pays us 60 bucks a year park wherever they suggest that they park. And I think we're going to hear from it, from Starbucks and other people, especially if they show up at the Blinn Tennis Courts with Starbucks literally across the street.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Any other, yes?
I mean, I think, I'm certainly not a lawyer, but after looking through the memo, this is a pilot, right? So if, what, I'm suggesting that we, you know, similar to what's brought in front of us is that we see how, we see how this goes for a year. If there's issues at any time, Poor Things Coffee can come in front of the board and we can make changes. I mean, I think we've, we've had Poor Things Coffee in front of the Select Board at least once. I think we should give them the benefit of the doubt. They seem like a reasonable business, business owners. They've already been at Bliss Park, there's been very positive reviews. I, I think it clearly states this is a pilot. I think we can reevaluate after the end of the year. And if some of these locations aren't working out, then we amend them. But I think we need to give them the benefit of the doubt. And these are also residents and taxpayers. And I would like to accept the proposal for all five of these locations. And if we have to come back next year and amend it, then, then we do that. This is viewed as a pilot. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah.
Yeah, Brianna, thank you for joining us. And had a few questions that maybe you can, you can answer and, you know, clear up for us. You know, I think, you know, largely, you know, I agree with what Dan said. I think they, you know, Poor Things has been very professional. They've done everything in a timely manner that we've asked of them to. And as I kind of mentioned at the last meeting, I want to make sure that we are, you know, I think with any, any business, they need clear guidance on what they can or cannot do. And, you know, that's what will set them up to be successful. And so, you know, you know, Mark brought up a concern about parking, the number of parking spots that, you know, you all would occupy. And so, you know, if you could answer that about, you know, how much space your truck would take up at these various locations, that would be helpful for us. And then I think, I remember from the last time you appeared before us, that you separately asked for approvals for different festivals, correct? Or it's something that's a different process through the Board of Health, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, so a couple of things that I can clear up for Mr. Gold. We have paid our fees for Pride and Long Meadow Fest, so we will see you there in our allotted space. Because we are vendors for both of those events, so we won't be taking up parking. In general, we take up one parking space because we are one vehicle. We transport some things with other vehicles, but we live across the street from the green. So we can park our vehicle at our home that we transport things in. Our truck is just one single truck. Yeah, I, you know, that's kind of the point, as simple as it gets.
Yeah, no, that's, that's helpful. I, yeah, because I remember seeing you all at Bliss Park and I thought it was one spot that you all occupied because it is not one of these, you know, huge food trucks, maybe, that people are thinking of. But the one thing that kind of, I also wanted to ask about was, in the memo we received, it said that there were potential concerns about you all being at Wolf Swamp and that interfering with the concession stands. But it seems like, but it seems like the Parks and Rec still signed off on it. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that that is not an issue moving forward. I don't know if you can tell us more about that conversation or, you know, why they ended up approving it?
I, I have not heard back from Parks and Rec personally, though I have called and left messages and we did email all of our locations to them. So we only heard through the Select Board that they had approved our locations.
Yeah, I could touch on that. So it was an internal conversation with Parks and Rec and the Police Department that we had about the locations. And it was some of the reservations that were brought up at the last Select Board meeting about parking and traffic in that area and then the potential for the concession stand also. But they said, just like Dan mentioned before, they agreed with like a pilot, you know, one year, see how it goes and then make adjustments from there.
Okay, so, great.
Okay. Yes, Josh?
Yeah, I tend to agree that this is, I think it's a good idea, a very good idea, make it a pilot program, see how it goes. And, but I favor this generally. I think Mark brought some valid concerns about the Community House spot. And I would just recommend that we approve this other than two times when there's permanent events on the green, when somebody else is renting the green, which I know has already been covered by Brianna, and also on Election Day. That would probably be a good day for you, but I'd rather keep that spot, keep as many spots so it's open as possible for people to vote. And we have a 30-minute voting limit, I'm sorry, parking limit there anyway on that, on Election Day. But otherwise, I think that this is something I want to see happen and I think it'd be good for the town. But the other, I do, I did kind of get my interest up on any other business in town would be paying taxes to be where they are. And I, I know, we may be having a similar conversation on this later, but I would be curious, returning to Tellerman, if other municipalities have, how they structure their fees for truck parking spaces? I know in Springfield, there are places where trucks can park. And I don't know if those permits are done differently and if there's something that we could look at. But I don't necessarily want to do that now. But I think it is something to curi, I'm telling you, I'm curious about for the future.
Okay. Well, I would say that we need to proceed with caution in a pilot project. And I would make a motion that we accept the first four locations. But the Long Meadow Community House on Long Meadow Street, I would not support that. I do not see folks agreeing with that. I've talked to folks on Long Meadow Street and they've made it very clear to me. They do not want to see businesses on the town green. If we accept this, this location for a food, for a coffee truck, then we're going to get food trucks all lined up in there. And that's not what people want to see in the center of Long Meadow Green. They don't want to see trucks lined up there selling food. And this is just the first one. I think I would make a motion to do the first four, if someone wants to second that. But, you know, I just, I think we're making a big mistake to open up the green to, to businesses unless we know what we're doing. You know, it just isn't very profitable to us in comparison to complaints that we're going to get and the way things could turn out in the near future, so.
Tom?
Okay, yes?
If you were making a formal motion, I'm not going to second it because I'm not in favor of any of this. But, but I just want to make, make a comment, respond to, it's a pilot. You know, one of the things that I've found is that you can always ease regulations, but it's extraordinarily difficult to tighten regulations because people have been doing it. And my suggestion is, we start with something and if it's going well, we ease it. If it's not going well, then we don't have to ease it. And I recognize that it's a pilot. I think a pilot ought to be less than a year, it ought to be probably six months, but with the winter, who knows what's going on here? But maybe through the end of the fiscal, next fiscal year, rather than a calendar year, you know? And, but also, I think we ought to start with some controls. And if it's going really well, and that's an incentive to get things really well, then we say, okay, we'll expand where it's going. And so that's why, you know, you're suggesting four. I'd suggest fewer than four, but that's where I'm at at this. I think, you know, you can always make it easier, but it's very difficult to make it harder.
Yeah, I mean, I will say that I, I don't have any issue with any of these locations. I think that, you know, Parks and Rec and the Police Department have also signed off on them, which I think just gives me more confidence that these locations are okay. I think the pilot program for a year, I think they mentioned last time that they appeared before us, that they don't operate in the winter. So we're talking about maybe, you know, another month or two that they're operating now and then they'll be operating again, you know, for a few months in the spring and summer before this comes up again. So, so because of that, I'm, I'm fine with, with doing this approval for a year.
Okay. So if that's the direction we're moving in, then what would be the wordage? The wording you use?
I'll make a motion that we accept Poor Things Coffee, all five truck locations that are listed here. I guess, do I read them out or?
No, we know they are. Is there?
I think you have to reference this document though, Dan. You don't have to read it, but as specified in the proposal.
As specified in the proposal memo from the town manager.
Do you want to mention anything about, when there's special festivals or anything?
Well, Josh did mention the Election Day.
Election and permanent events where the town green has, Parks and Rec has issued a permit for the town green, is what I recommend.
Okay, so that would be included in this?
Yes.
Yeah, they would have to pay the festival fee or something?
Well, if they're going to the festival, they're paying that fee already.
But, but Dan, the issue is, if we had authorized this, in theory, they wouldn't have had to pay the festival fee because that's their spot. That's the point. I mean, you're right, they paid the festival fee, but frankly, if I was doing this business next year, I'd save myself the money of festival fee saying, hey, this is my spot, it was authorized by the Select Board. That's why I think we need the exemption.
I think it's already blocked off anyways, that the festival, that section.
Well, Brianna, you'd be parking on the green, right, where the other food trucks are?
Yeah, just to be, just to be clear, with festivals, we're happy to pay the fee to be part of Long Meadow Festival, Town Festival, that's important for us. We're not going to piggyback on a festival and park in a parking spot to get a free ride on a day that there's going to be a lot of people out. That, we would not want to do that. We would want to be part of the festival, thus we would pay the festival fee.
Okay, so then that's like an informal agreement. It's an informal agreement that we don't have to worry about festivals for this pilot project.
Yeah, 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 Dan made it part of the motion.
It's part of the motion, it's carved out.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
And, you know, I'm not without concerns, Brianna. But I have only heard positive things. So I hope we don't hear from people for next year because I would, I'd be up to limiting it next year, changing your spots if we get any complaints. But I hope we don't and wish you the best of luck on this.
My point of information, two questions. One is, you know, what if we do get complaints in two months? Can we modify this or is this, we're in it for the year no matter what? The second thing is, is this limited and can it be limited to Poor Things Coffee? Or is this an authorization for food vendors? It's just a question.
The way I read the bylaw is that it's an authorization for a specific vendor, not a blanket authorization for any food vendor.
Yeah, the motion is for Poor Things Coffee Truck.
This is for Poor Things Coffee Truck Locations.
It has to be written consent from the Select Board. So as soon as the vote were to happen, if it's an approval, a written consent written by either the Chair or Admin or myself would go out to Poor Things Coffee detailing everything and it would be a granted permit.
And, and Mark, on your second question, I think this, and I would have to look at our bylaws again, but it's with written permission from the Select Board, which I imagine we can withdraw if this is an absolute disaster.
I don't, I don't expect it to be, but, you know, Tom said he's heard people are concerned about it. If people are concerned about it, we're going to get phone calls. I mean, we're the ones who are going to get the phone calls.
Well, there's, there's no one here at the meeting, you know, it's, I've been on the agenda. So people may react for, react later. And I guess the question is, there's no timeline on this. We call it a pilot project and so it could be informal timeline as far as, you know, the proposal is that there's no timeline on this. But if there were complaints, then we also have the right to make adjustments at that point in time, right?
Oh, yeah, we should modify it with a date, I think, and at the end of-
Well, as of September 5th is, so, until September 4th?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
You say from, we're going to start this on what date?
Today.
Okay, as of today.
As of today and it would end on September 4th, 2024.
Well, it's recommended to run with the permitting schedule for the Health Department, which is calendar year?
Yes.
So we should run it with that.
And what are the dates on that?
Well, that would be the calendar year, so ending, end of December. So it really, if we want to align it, it's, it's for a month. If, as long as it stays warm, I guess. Brianna, is that going to significantly, I mean, you have to go for permits again in January. And I, we're not, it doesn't cost us any, it doesn't cost anything to us, right? For this, so I'd say we do it through the end of the year. We'll see you again early next year or before the summer, if that's what you want to do. If that makes sense to everyone.
Okay, so it sounds like that's the motion and those are the timelines.
Got that, Dan?
Is it through the summer or is it through January? That's all I need to know.
December 31st, 2023.
December 31st, from now until the 7/31st and for five, these five locations. And basically, you know, any festivals, you would need to sell coffee at the festival. And that's it? Yeah?
I, I just want to try to restate this motion, Dan. If this isn't your motion, let me know. But your motion is to approve the, the, all five locations for Pour Things Coffee as specified in the document that was submitted to us, with the exception of Election Day and Permanent Events for the Long Meadow Green, with this approval to be run now through December 31st, 2023. Is that the motion?
That is the motion.
That's what Dan said.
And who seconded it?
He seconded it.
Okay. So if there's no further discussion, we'll go to a vote.
Thank you, Mark.
All those in favor? All those opposed? All right. So now we move to our, well, congratulations. I hope this goes well.
Thank you.
Okay.
To my opposed friends, please come by for a cup of coffee, okay?
And now we move to, let's see, the Traffic and Roads Policy and Committee, and we've been sent a, a document that has some red lines in there. And Lynn, can you just give, bring us up the date on this?
I presented this to you at the August 5th meeting. We had some discussion there, and then the idea was for you to go back and look at it, see what you wanted for changes. And the document you have in front of you tonight, I believe, is the word, or is the Google Doc changes suggested by Josh. Is that right?
Right.
I know I did. I don't know if anybody else did.
I, I didn't, and I wish I had because at this point, I have a lot of comments, and I don't know how to deal with it because I, I just didn't get around to it then. But, you know, I mean, I don't know how to best do this, and I, unfortunately, because open meeting law, I couldn't send everybody a copy of what I, what I was looking to do. But, you know, there, there's a lot of issues along the way, but I'll, I'll jump right to the bottom line, which is the whole idea here of public hearings on this stuff is, I'm, I'm opposed to. I think, you know, we're just overreacting to something that happened on, on Ellington. And essentially, the, the system we have with a few tweaks, in my opinion, would work really well. It, it's almost to the, be careful what you ask for because if every time we want to do anything on traffic, we've got to have a public hearing, it's just going to overwhelm us. So that whole section that, that started out following measures require a public hearing all the way down to vertical deflect. I took all that out. I, I would take all that out, and Lynn, I'll be glad to share with you what I did. I also believe that, that in the beginning, that, that we need to have, you know, it says if a neighborhood feels there's a speed, this is under reporting the problem. I don't know how you define neighborhood, and that's why I think it needs to say if a neighborhood group or something like that, or a group of individuals from a neigh-, but to say if a neighborhood feels that there's a speeding or traffic, you know, I'm three people, and I'm in the neighborhood, and I feel we ought to do it, I think that's, that's going to be problematic if, if, you know, that kind of thing.
I think Josh, I think Josh did make that change towards the bottom, right? You know, which I, I think is a really good change. I think, Josh, did you change it from 10% to 25%?
Yeah, and Mark, I address both the things. I don't know if you have anything else, but just those quickly. I, the, the change I made, I don't want us to be having a public hearing every week on traffic matters either. What I, what I made some changes, and I think it'd be great to have more input, but I changed it so the bar for public hearing, you, you don't get a public hearing just because you asked for. And the traffic advisory group will be the first bar, and they can dismiss things out of hand, or they can say, here's some other things we can do, we'll offer this to you. And, but then, big changes I do think should come to us, and it won't happen that often because I, I think there won't, a lot of things won't get out of the TRAG. Like if everyone says, well, we want a stop sign, and the TRAG will say, no, you don't get a stop sign, and here's why. And so, but I, I think some things are very important, and I, I don't ever want us to get in a position where we're the last to know when something's happening and, and have people on the street. But I, and the other part is, I, I do think that raising the bar for what can even come to the TRAG is very important. And I, I changed it mostly in the application down below, where I, I, I upped the percentages and have different percentages for different sides of streets. And so that will, that does change the, the dynamic of who can come together. It can't be, if you've got a street with 50 houses, three houses can't band together and say, we want to be in front of the TRAG and get a public hearing. It won't get that far. So that's, I understand your approach and your concerns certainly, but I, I think the, my thought process there is have the public hearings, but make it very important and hard to get to.
Okay, I, I hear you, Josh. I, I'll also say that there's a section there that starts, starts out, devices not included in traffic calming. My comment is, none of that is policy. It's a statement of traffic control. But this is a policy document. And so all that stuff about devices not included in, in traffic calming is, it's nice, but it's not a, it's not a policy. If we're writing a policy for the select board or for the, for the town, we don't talk about, we don't, you know, go back and dig up what, what's traffic calming and what's not traffic calming based on the, you know, the DPWs and Department of Transportation and all that other stuff. So, you know, like I said, when I went through this, there was a whole bunch of things that were concerning me. I also was concerned that we're in a part of the spot we're in now because of the requirements for who's on this. And right now, this is being changed, so it must be the town manager, it must be the DPW director, and the town engineers, you know? And it says, you know, the TRAG members may designate town employees to attend. I think they can invite them, but I wouldn't want to see a town, town, you know, town employees designated to attend. It says, but voting power shall remain with the TRAG members? We have a, we have a position in the police department called traffic officer. He is in char-, he or she is in charge of the traffic, and that person's not going to be on this committee and not, not going to be the, a, a decision maker on this committee. Then why do we entrust our traffic and our streets and our safety to a, a particular police officer who say, but you can't, you're, you're not the person who's involved in this? It's the, it's the police chief.
We haven't said that. We're making the policy.
That's the community resource officer. They're still in here.
Where? Oh, in the community resource officer. That's the community resource officer?
Yep.
I mean, rather than doing it on the fly, do you want to table this and you can have a chance to review it, Mark, and come back to us?
What I could do is send, because I couldn't send it to everybody, you know? I don't know, maybe what I'd like to do is send this to Lynn and say, Lynn, take what I did, take what Josh did, put them all together and come up with what you like from mine and Josh's and the people you talked to who are the employees of the town and who are the professionals in this thing, and see if anything makes sense. I'd, I'd like to at least do that.
That was another thing I changed. I, I don't think that the membership just designate anybody. If they're going to designate permanently, if there's anything, because I know Lynn's busy, Sean's busy, if they were ever wanting to do a more permanent designation, they'd have to come to us for approval rather than leaving all that power because we, we want to know who's on this thing. If that, you know, maybe everyone thinks it's not a good idea to even give them designation power.
Well, I think we could fine tune it. I think that sounds like it's appropriate thing, you know? We want to make sure it's in good shape. I mean, the thing I liked about it was the fact that if there was a hearing that you were going to invite the people on the street, you know, that was, could be an important part to, to not making errors because they say, well, you can't put double lines on our street. So, so there's some good things in here. And maybe we could just fine tune it and come back?
Yeah, no, I, I think Josh, you did a great job with this. I think for me, it, it addressed, you know, a lot of the concerns that I had previously. You know, obviously, I think you did a good job with spelling out who should be, or, you know, identifying who should be part of the traffic committee, giving the traffic committee more discretion. And then, you know, and I think you're completely right about the bar being pretty high for it to get to that public hearing stage. And I think, you know, I think the last time, Lynn, you mentioned that for the last, you know, since you've been here, we've only gotten, you know, one or two, you know, applications, you know, that have come through, through this. So, yeah, so I think, I don't, I don't necessarily have any critiques of this. I think, I think this reflected our conversation and our concerns from the last meeting.
Just on the, on the bar to getting a public hearing, I just, I, this is my neighborhood. It just came up, and the line, the lines going through really, it's certain email lists in the neighborhood, and people are now talking about things. I sent this out when I, when I was first drafted, and people are talking, coming up with ideas. And that's, if we make a bar, we're encouraging that to happen, and that, I think that's what we want.
The only two things I, I want to add, and I'll, I can bring this back, if, if your decision is that I kind of coordinate everybody's thoughts on this. Under what would require a public hearing, I think I'm going to need to come up with some language that differentiates the traffic detours, like the ever-source non-stop work that's happening, where we've, we've done temporary street blockages or changes in traffic pattern. I don't believe that should come to you for a public hearing. I think that jurisdiction has to lie with the police and DPW. And then the other is, I have a, maybe this is just a difference of opinion, I don't believe pedestrian activated devices should come to you for a public hearing either. I think that those are, those fall under the discretion of the DPW when it comes to crosswalks. But I'm, I'm open to talking about it. And then the other thing, I, I'll have to figure out how to note this, is I don't want, my intention is not to have DPW have to come to you for a public hearing every time they're doing an engineering project that didn't, that wasn't triggered by this traffic calming policy. The example is the safe routes to school. I mean, there were public hearings involved with that because it was a mass stop project, but there was a rapid RF, a rapid flashing beacon we applied for through a grant that came up during COVID for Laurel Street near Farmington. The DPW knew that was a hotspot because it's dark there, a lot of people cross to go to the park. They responded quickly by applying for it. We got the grant. It's going in. So I don't, unless you feel strongly that those things should come to you, I just, I don't want to bog it down either.
Well, to me, this is all, all of this is what is triggered by a citizen petition. So if there's something else going on, I.
But that's not what it says, Josh. That's the problem.
But we could refine that.
And we have, we have not previously been involved, perhaps detrimentally because of something that occurs. But very frankly, you know, I think the town learned its lesson from, from Ellington and, and, you know, but, you know, every time somebody says we need a stop light or a stop sign, and in fact, we've got some resident in town who's now telling us we need different kind of crosswalk signs at every school crosswalk, does the select board need to get involved? And the answer is, I'm not a professional on, on that, and none of us are. What we are is, are citizens who understand we don't want yellow lines painted down the road. But when it comes down to what's the proper device or system to go in a certain place based on traffic signals, we're going to turn to Lynn and to the police department and to the DPW and say, what are the numbers saying? What do people say? And so why?
Well, that, that's why we give the TRAG the right to do certain things, but I, I think that other things should come before us.
But we need to better define, Josh.
That's what, that's what we're working on.
Right.
I'm not saying we should vote on this. That's, I made changes so we could talk about it.
Okay, I, I'm fine. Like I said, I, I still think a lot of this is in policy, but.
I mean, one of the, I, I think we're, we're making, you know, really good points here. I think one of the things we could think about potentially is if, if we look at some of the, the main roads, we're talking about crosswalks or signs that need to be changed or areas in town that have a lot of traffic and foot traffic, car traffic, what have you, maybe we take a look at and designating some of these roads where the, the TRAG group has the authority to make those changes potentially or recommendations, rather than just saying, you know, you're looking at every single small road in town, like Ellington Street or Farmington or any other road in town, but we designate specific roads that are high traffic and say the authority can be with that group to make the decisions that come up. And I, I mean, maybe it's a bad idea, but I'm just trying to.
No, no, I'm just saying, but the problem is high, high traffic doesn't mean high interest or low interest necessarily by people, right?
But what I'm saying is there's no, there's no crosswalk on, 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 I guess I'll use.
Conver Street.
Well, yeah, and Conver Street, there's, there's, yeah, there's crosswalks there. But I'm saying, if you're going to a side street that doesn't have a lot of action like Shady Side or Deep Woods, there's no crosswalks, there's limited signage. I'm just trying to think of a way that we could have, we don't have all these different hearings pop up, and, and the group can make their own decision.
Right, but Dan, you know that every street in this town is a cut through to some degree except for the cul-de-sacs, right? And so everybody thinks at some point, my, you know, I, I keep going back to Quintet Thug, my roads are cut through, I want the road closed, you know? And, and I, you know, for that kind of stuff to come to the select board drives me nuts because we're not experts.
But I think that's what the policy, I think, is, is addressing here that Josh has brought up, saying that's not going to fly. Now, maybe 15 years ago when it happened, it, it did. But that's why I think this group could address some of the areas that are more high traffic and have the autonomy to make those decisions. That's just an idea.
So how do, the question, Dan, is how do we give this group the autonomy that they ought to have as the professionals in this town? Separate from the politics of a yellow line down a street or a flashing light in front of somebody's house who doesn't want the flashing light? Because those are, those are the things that, that rile people, in my opinion, and, and those are the things that, you know, frankly, and no offense, Lynn, but people who work in town but don't live in town may not have the same sensitivity as somebody who lives in town and has to live, live with the flashing light in front of their house, right? And so how do we, how do we define those? And I'm not, you know, yelling, I'm just saying, you know, how do we put that down on paper so that we have the right things being done by the people who are professionals in it? And how do we have the right things being done by the people who are, you know, responding to the politics of the issue?
I mean, no, I mean, I think it's a valid point. I think we're allowing the traffic officer, the, the folks that are the experts, that have the knowledge and expertise around, you know, public safety and traffic patterns and things like that, that they would address these areas that if it's Long Meadow Street, Conver Street, Maple Road, Frank Smith, Williams, some of those roads. And then the policy that Josh is talking about, or that we're all talking about, it, it would flush out some of the smaller neighborhoods' roads based on how Josh had redlined this. It's something for us to think about.
I, I, but I can throw out another scenario, and I'm, we're just talking here. So my other scenario, you know, if this group, let's say, the group that we had, which was maybe effective, maybe ineffective, maybe met, maybe didn't, but we take that group and we formalize the group we had, and we said, said, you need to report back with two weeks' notice to the select board of any action you're going to take. And we get to say, wait a second, that's political, you got to be watch, watch out for that. I mean, to me, that balances what they're doing professionally with us putting on it our hats of, of the town and the politics and the, and the residents. But what happens is, in fact, that group has worked in a vacuum, and that's what we're overreacting. And I can tell you, in my neighborhood, there were like 12 stop signs that popped up one day, and everybody went nuts. And the town manager just said, tough luck. So it was tough luck, you know? But, you know, we, we operated for 95 years without stop light, stop signs, and then somebody put them up, and we can argue why they did. But, so the point is, if, if that group that we had wasn't operating totally independently of political overview or public oversight, maybe that's sufficient. Because when they went to order or say, we're going to paint lines on Ellington, it would have come before us, and I got to tell you, at least Josh and I would have said, wait a second, been there, done that on Green Hill, we're not, don't go there again. You know? And, and I really believe that that process would work, and we don't need any of this because the, the system we have could work if it was actually formed. But frankly, you know, when. But frankly, you know, when's the last time that, that safety committee really has met on a organized, you know, team, they meet quarterly.
We were meeting every single month until this happened.
Okay, you know, so, so I think that the issue is, maybe that's enough. I mean, we got, you saw the book, we got a book this thick of stuff we don't even know what the heck's in there, of, of traffic rules and regulations and stop signs and speed limits and all that kind of stuff. So I'm just suggesting, you know, fix what you have instead of reinventing the wheel.
We are fixing what we have though. You're saying we learned our lesson from Ellington, but we didn't learn our lesson from Greenacre, so.
Well, but I disagree. I learned my lesson from Greenacre and I think you did too. The problem was Lynn and Sean weren't in town that day and what they did, they, they didn't check with anybody or say to anybody, this is what we're going to do, because they felt they were authorized to go do it.
I got to tell you, if they, if it had come to us and they'd said, we want to put yellow lines on Ellington and you weren't here, it might have gone through and then people would have lost, people did, same thing would have happened. We can't.
But it wouldn't, I don't, who knows what it would have been.
I, I don't know, and that's why I think I want to have a process.
What I'm trying to prevent from happening again is if there's, if I'm not sitting in this seat or three of you are not here, we lose that institutional knowledge and then there's no policy to tell you what to do and what not to do. We did have a policy, it was woefully incomplete. It doesn't talk about who is the traffic committee. So really, us deciding to put lines on the street could have been, we weren't even the traffic committee. It was just the, in our view, the right thing to have done.
It's interesting, you should mention historical policy because it was a historical policy in the 1800s that there should be no business on the green and we weren't alive then, so I guess it didn't matter. But Ethan.
Yeah, I, I just don't think that this is that much of a departure from what we previously had. I think it's just explaining it better, you know, just kind of, I mean, just echoing what Lynn said. Yeah, I don't think that we're reinventing the wheel here. I think we're just clarifying what needs to be clarified.
A tweak I want to make, and this is something when I'm redlining, sometimes I, I get lost in it. What needs to be more clear is that the traffic committee can stop, can, doesn't have to make a recommendation. I think it says that, but it should be more clear. So if, if a street says, we want to have, we want to be blocked off on the one way like Quintetalk, the TRAG I think should have the right to say, no, we don't want that. And maybe there's, maybe there's a way to appeal that, maybe it goes to town meeting then, but if the TRAG stops it, it doesn't come to us. So we're not going to, and that stops us from hearing junk.
That's interesting. Yeah, the appeal could be a citizen petition.
Yeah, which is what you would have to do anyway, they override us. So, yeah, that's why I talk out loud and things pop out.
So let's move on. We will make some adjustments. We'll put this on a future agenda, Mike, to just look at the corrected, or the updated version. And so let's move on to our, our new business. And so we have a liquor license amendment application for Long Meadow Kitchen to change how they're doing business as, so they've, you know, is there a representative from the kitchen in attendance tonight?
I don't see anyone here. They did previously confirm, but I don't see them in chat.
Probably went to bed.
Tom, we'll make it easier. I'm just going to make a motion that we approve that.
Well, wait a second, I have a question. So they, this, the owner now, Mr. Blythe, he's, whatever him, Barquette.
He sold it.
There was a transfer of stock.
We were here when they sold it.
Okay, so he transferred here and then, and they're changing the name of it to the Thirsty Dog.
Yeah, it's not a corporation name change, it's just a change of doing business as.
So I got to ask, why, the sign's been up for months. Can somebody explain what happened here?
My understanding is that it was an oversight on the business that they didn't apply for some sort of permit. My understanding now is that they went back, got a signed permit, now they're making the DBA change official. There was, there was a miscommunication between what, not between us, but between what they had to do with what.
Okay. Have they changed their DBA with the town?
Yeah, you, no, you have to change your DBA with the state, with the, with the ABCC and then you can do it with, oh no, excuse me, backwards. He applied for a change of DBA with the town clerk and then comes forward. So that's all said as well.
Okay, now we had given them approval to have different hours for serving alcohol.
No, we did not.
I thought we did. I thought they could start serving before noon or something.
No way. All we approved is a transfer of the liquor license from Bobby Barquette to the New Orleans.
Yeah, it was a transfer of stock.
Before, Mr. Barquette, what were the times?
It was the same as everybody else in that area.
The times are the same as everyone else?
Times aren't changing, yeah. There was original request that they may have been submitting a change in hours request along with this, but they ended up not going forward with that.
Okay, so then we're just changing and doing business as.
Who was changing the name?
Okay, so you have a motion?
Yeah, I move we approve the change in DBA from Long Meadow Kitchen to Thirsty Dog.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? And, but no one is here from the Thirsty Dog, so if there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Okay. And next, we have a one-day liquor license application for the Pride Festival. Do we have someone from the Pride Festival here?
I don't believe from the Pride Festival, but we may have somebody from the application.
The one-day application's from One Way.
Yeah, I don't want to speak, I want to speak to someone from the Pride Festival. Is there anyone from them? Okay, because they were, I would think that they were going to request from the select board, so why don't we, we can come back to them. Let's move on to the Long Meadow Adult Center. Community Fund is looking for a two-day, a one-day liquor license and we'll come back to the Pride Festival. I'm in charge of the agenda. So we have someone from the Adult Center?
Um, let me check if Mary Vets in the chat. I don't see her in the chat.
Mary Vets not from the Adult Center.
She's from.
It's not, LACCf made the application, not the Adult Center.
That's the application. All right, so LACCf is running the event and is she here?
I do not see her in the chat, no.
Tom, I hate to say this, but for this use, in this location, this has almost become routine. I mean, we get two requests a month, every month, for one-day liquor licenses from LACCf in the Adult Center. And so, you know, and we've been approving them all along. So why would she show up when she's been submitting these things for the last six months at least and at least for four or five of them not coming here? So I'm, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying that's the situation. You know, this has become, I mean, from my perspective, and I'm going to speak out here, you know, if somebody's going to have two one-day liquor licenses a month, they're within the, the limits of the ABCC, which says 30 a year or 32 a year, something like that. So they're within the limits, but at some point, you know, go get a liquor license, you know, and if, if you're going to do this twice a month, every month in the same location. But she chose not to and we can't require her to do that.
She can't.
Because she's not a business. Well, you're the expert.
She, she can't get a liquor license at a town facility.
At a facility, right.
That's, that's impossible.
So, so that's where we are. It, it's, you know, if we're allowing the serving of alcoholic beverages in a town facility, this is the process and this is what we've come to.
Okay, so we have two one-day liquor license applications.
I'll move to approve the September 14th and September 28th, 2023 LACCf one-day liquor license applications for events at the Long Meadow Adult Center.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussions? All those in favor? Oppose? Okay. And next, we have St. Mary's Guild. Do we have anyone from the St. Mary's Guild here?
I put a note in front of you that we're going to table that one until the 18th. They were missing some information, so their event's not until the 26th, so we have some time to put it on the next agenda.
Okay, so they'll be back to us?
Yeah, they were just missing a few items that were necessary to be part of the package.
Okay, so now we can go back to the Pride Festival. So, you know, again, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we've had festivals on the green for over 30 years with no alcohol. The Pride Festival is requesting a liquor license and there's no one for the Pride Festival here?
They're not requesting it.
Pride Festival is not requesting a liquor license.
They're not requesting.
They're not requesting, it's one-way. One-way brewing.
So we're approving it not to the festival?
It's, it's not going on public, public land. They can't do this on public land. It's going on in somebody's private front yard, right?
It looks like it's on the street line.
It's not the community house line.
It looks on the lawn, the street. It's according to this diagram.
It's, it's next door.
This is the same location as it was last year that was approved.
But that's not the town.
This is not.
I know, no, Mark, I'm saying it's the same.
Right, right, but I'm just saying, it's not town property.
It's not town property, it's the same location as it was last year.
This is like the beer garden with Fletcher's.
Right, right. I'm not arguing, you're right. But it's not, but it's not town property, though, correct?
Right, yeah, just.
But what I see here is, is an application not from the event, but from. It's a private property for their own event. They're going to sell alcohol, but it's not connected to Pride Festival because the Pride people are not here.
It, it just takes place the day of the Pride Festival, it's just.
So we are going to grant approval for, for a group that, but, but I want to see how this works because if I look at this diagram and what I know of the Pride Festival, it's nowhere near the Pride Festival.
Sure is. Pride Festival's on the green. It's, it's kitty comeer too.
It's, one is over by Center School. Right?
Well, it, it comes all the way past the church.
This is the same, this is the same location that was vetted out last year. And to my knowledge, I don't think there was one issue at this event. I mean, it's, it's not on town property.
Well, it isn't near, it isn't really, it's an odd thing that people have to go all the way across William Street to, to be part of it and it's, it doesn't seem like it's part of the Pride Festival, to me, at my point.
It's not the Pride, the, the Pride Festival has include, you know, and, and let's take it back to when it was Long Meadow Days and the Fall Festival, you know, that's from the library and the stores house at the library all the way to the, to the very south end of Town Green.
Right.
And, and everything in between. And so this area fell in between. Now, at this point, the Pride Festival isn't extending to the library and to stores house, but nevertheless, you know, they've applied for, One Way Brewing has applied for a one-day liquor license to serve alcoholic beverages in this facility. And I assume they're roping it off and they're going to control who comes and goes and they're going to run it as a one-day liquor license.
Well, Jason's here, we can, you know.
Right, well, I already know what he's going to say because he stands to make a nice profit. And I know it's, it's pretty separate from the people from the Pride Festival coming to the town saying, do you accept this event and accept this to be part of our event? This seems completely separate from it and I just think in the future, we need to come up with a policy that deals with serving alcohol on the Town Green or even on private location and adjacent to the Town Green during a festival and that we need to really think this out because we need to know exactly how much alcohol is being sold and I believe we need to get a percentage of it. We deserve that. It's legal to do? I know, Josh, you had looked into it, right?
Well, I, I did. You brought this up to me on Friday. I emailed the executive director of the ABCC today and he called me and said that we can do whatever we want, but we shouldn't. And I, and I, that's not what you want to hear, but he, he said it would rope us in for liability purposes. And Attorney Tellerman, I think, has a different view of that, that are, the amount that we charge for a permit must be commensurate with what our administrative costs, which is what I brought up initially. And that would not be commensurate. And if I could speak further on this, if you don't mind, we're not asking for a percentage of any other vendor on the green. We are, and I, this is a local business, I don't think we should be squeezing them, even if we could, even if it was a good idea. That's not, to me, what we should be doing to a business. And again, as I said, we're not doing it to any other vendor. There are other people making money at these events, even other businesses, and we're not asking for a percentage of them. I don't think we should treat.
Right, well, I can see that and I, and I know that there's some folks on the board here that are very much in support of, of this business and, and, you know, I can't say that that's a problem for me necessarily, but I do think that there are other municipalities who look at the complications that are caused by addictions. And if you look at the, the major taxes, okay, when we look at gambling, there's a high tax on gambling. You know, the, the government of Massachusetts states that they were losing $2 billion in taxes to people going to Connecticut to gamble. So they said, we are going to tax gambling heavily. Marijuana, it's heavily taxed because it's an addiction, it causes problems. Alcohol, we know there's a high tax on alcohol. You know, if we are having people sell alcohol for town festivals, if there's difficulties, we are going to have to pay for it. And I'm not just talking about people getting in a fight or something like that, I'm talking about problems in terms of family structure, domestic violence and all the other things that can come along with this that are, you know, health problems, you know, that are fire and police are going to be dealing with. And so we should find out exactly how much is being sold. We could sell tickets, they could, they should report to us how much is being sold and we should then decide if we should meet and get a percentage of that because other communities will not put up with that. They charge vendors of alcohol a percentage, they negotiate it before they serve, and I know we're new at this because we just started, but like I said before, it's not going away and we're going to have more vendors and, you know, what's going to stop another brewery coming to us and saying, oh, by the way, we want to have a booth on this weekend? And the Pride Festival, they haven't showed up, they haven't said anything, you know?
Josh? I'll tell you what stops it, we vote no. We have one brewery in town that's coming here. It doesn't mean any other brewery gets to come here. And if we take a cut of One Way's beer sales, we become a vendor and we, I, I, long-term worries, I, I don't think.
We already have long-term worries.
Sure, I don't, I don't, I don't think long-term, I, fine, I, I don't, we can't trace it back to this event, but what we could trace back is if somebody did get in a car accident on the way out, even if they had, they had one beer and the other, the insurance company sues them, that's us because we became a vendor. We became licensee. That is a one-to-one.
We are on the line and I think we should discuss this in executive session.
I'm telling you, it makes it worse. If we take some of that money, if we take 10% of what One Way takes in, then we become a vendor and that makes it worse for us.
Well, communities do this and they, you know, they, they would stop doing it if it wasn't worth, it did them benefit.
I know, you said that that was in New York, maybe they have different laws on it.
It sounds like we have the same ability to do it here. They said we can agree and so.
I think Attorney Tellerman can pitch in on that because I.
Well, again, if we're going to negotiate contracts, it would be something we would do in executive session, so. So at this point, make the motion, sell the beer, go ahead.
All right, we move to approve a one-day liquor license for One Way Brewing for September 17th, 2023 at a space just off of Long Meadow Street, as shown on the map in the application.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Okay, we have a street closure application, Dover Road Block Party application. Do we have a motion to accept this block party? Street closure?
I actually have a motion to accept it, but I, I, I had a problem with the map, you know, because when they're closing Dover Road, they really should close, I think it's the north end of Dover Road, they should, we should extend it to Chatham at the north to, to Chatham, because what happens is people can go by that and then they're stuck on a barrier. There's, there's, there's a lot of people who use Dover Road as a cut through because every road's a cut through, certainly going from Converse Street to, to, to Laurel Street and the other way around. And I'm just saying that the barricades need to be further down. I mean, I, I approve this, I think it's a good, fine idea, I love this thing, but people coming up Dover Road from Laurel Street ought to know that when they get to Chatham, they got to turn right because they can't keep going straight because they'll run into a barricade and I just think it's a problem. Have you found where I went?
So you're, you're making a motion to approve this.
I'm to prove it. I have to approve it, but I, I think we got to...
They did say in the application, we would rather have them at, on Chatham Road, that they could do that.
What, what was that?
In the application, they did say, if we would rather have them do this on Chatham Road.
No, I'm not saying do it on Chatham Road, close Dover, but close it at Chat. So if you turn off...
At Chat, they should have a sign saying the road's closed.
If you turn, if you turn off of Laurel and go up Dover Road, you're going to go past Chatham and run in, and as you turn the corner, you're going to bump, run into a, the road's closed. I'm just saying, put the barricade there, so you got to turn down Chatham.
That's a good idea.
So for all these crazy people who are cutting through Dover Road, which they do.
Unless there's some reason why, but probably not, so, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. No, I, I see what you're saying.
I'm, I'm...
It's a good idea.
I'll move we approve the road closure with a change of the, I think it's the north bar, barrier over to Chatham Road. Does that make sense, Lynn?
I know what you're saying. I don't know if what you just described makes sense, but I know what your end result is.
That makes...
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. No further discussion, all those approved? Okay. And then we have the Ellington Street Block Party application?
Yeah, we've done this every year. I'll move that we approve the road closure for, for Ellington Roads Block Party for, what's the date on it?
September 9th.
For September 9th, as recommended by the police department.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. And then correspondence, was any member like to comment on the correspondence material? I know Mark had already commented on the one letter for the uniform aggregation purchase. Any other comments? No? Okay.
I'll move re-adjourn.
Yes. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Good evening.